In session, roll call please. I'm sorry. How are we religious if we...I'm sorry. Who has the implication?
I do.
Go ahead, buddy.
Good morning, everyone. It's my pleasure to welcome a very good friend and community leader, Brian Fry. Mr. Fry is currently in his fourth year as a successful professional real estate agent in the Tampa Bay area. Before becoming a Realtor, Mr. Fry enjoyed a 31-year career in live theatrical entertainment, which literally began here in Tampa when he was 19-years-old. He has traveled thousands of miles around the world, working for such world-renowned companies as Bush Entertainment Corporation, Busch Gardens, Feld Entertainment, Celebrity Cruises, Princess Cruises, and Cirque du Soleil, among others. Prior to returning to Tampa, he served as the Vice President and General Manager of Atlantis Theater of the Stars, producing Broadway, national, and regional tours. Mr. Fry lives with his husband Troy and their three dogs in beautiful Hampton Terrace and Old Seminole Heights. He is a very passionate and active community leader, an advocate, and is the founding president of the Hampton Terrace Community Association. If we could please stand for the prayer and remain standing for the pledge. Mr. Fry.
Let's bow our heads. Holy One, known by many names and beyond all names, Spirit of life, Spirit of love, Spirit of community, and Spirit of justice, we ask your blessings and countenance for our honorable mayor and city council, our city staff, and all of the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Guide them as leaders to not only ask, "How do we fix problems?", but to also ask, "What do we need to learn? How might we need to change? How can we do better? And to whom do we need to listen?" Remind each of them that they are not only leaders but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all citizens of this great city. As day-to-day political business can sometimes cloud our judgment or steer us to walk a different path, may they be granted the wisdom, knowledge, and forethought to align their hearts and their minds in the directions that better serve our citizens, our city. Remind them that no matter where or how we live, no matter our means, that everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black or white, Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh or atheist, is our neighbor, and that throughout the ages prophets have called the leaders of the people to respect and protect the least of those among us: our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who are ill in body, mind, or spirit, the strangers and immigrants in our midst, those who live on the margins, those who are alone, and those who are forgotten. Grant them and us the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right, good, and true. May we together speak out when it's time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it's time to listen. Continue to remind us all that what is done here today, all that is accomplished, is for the pursuit of truth and for the service of humanity. May we together always be guided by the Spirit of community, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. Holy One, we give thanks for everyone gathered here now. Open our minds so that we may receive your eternal wisdom. Open our spirits so that we may know your leading and guidance, and open our hearts so that we may receive your wonderful love. This we pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and true, and all that we know to be right and just. May it be so. Amen.
Amen. The President is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Dean Felber.
Here.
Goots.
Here.
Madisonelco.
Here.
Citro.
Here.
Miranda.
Here.
Carlson.
Here.
Vieira.
Here. Okay. Thank you very much. We begin now with item number one, our city attorney, Ms. Grimes.
Morning, councilmembers. Gina Grimes, City Attorney. And I'm here this morning to address item number one and to clear up some confusion, I think, that occurred last week, caused in part by our office. I want to begin by saying, when Chairman Vieira first raised this issue, he requested Marty Shelby, Council Attorney, to do some research, and Marty obtained copies of similar resolutions that were adopted by the City of St. Pete and the City of Clearwater. And they provided me copies of those resolutions, and actually Chairman Vieira drafted a proposed resolution. The issue I reviewed was whether or not you all had the authority to adopt a resolution that supports federal legislation that would ban assault weapons and high-capacity ammunition magazines, and also supporting federal legislation that would impose a national red flag law and also stricter laws with regard to background checks. And as some of you may know, there's a Florida statute that deals with this subject, Florida Statute 790.33. And it clearly states that the state of Florida has preempted the field of regulation of firearms and ammunition. There's no question about it. And what I examined was whether or not this proposed resolution would be consistent or in violation with that state preemption. And what that state preemption provides is that no municipality, no local government can adopt an ordinance, regulation, or rule with regard to firearms or ammunition. Because this resolution is a policy statement or a position statement with respect to federal legislation, it's my position that it does not violate that state preemption. So you would have the authority to move forward if you so choose with a resolution as I described. The one other thing I did want to mention, and because I think it's worthy of mentioning, is that there are substantial penalties under the state law if you do in fact violate it. Again, a violation is adoption of an ordinance, rule, or regulation regarding firearms or ammunition. If you were to be found to violate that, there are substantial penalties. There is a case out of the First District of Leon County that has...there's been a ruling that those penalties...some of those penalty provisions have been deemed to be unconstitutional. The governor, the Attorney General, and the Commissioner of the FDLE have all appealed that ruling. So the issue of whether or not those penalties are constitutional or not is still in question, but they are substantial penalties, and they include such things as the ordinance would be declared null and void. A penalty of up to $5,000 can be imposed upon any official, elected and including appointed officials, if you violate that statute. There is also a basis in there for removal from office. The public is prohibited from spending public funds to defend a violation of that statute. And then there's even a cause of action that's permitted by any organization whose membership is affected by an ordinance, rule, or regulation that violates the statute. So I wanted you to know all that upfront. I also wanted you to know about the case regarding the constitutionality of those penalty provisions. But again, bottom line is, this is a resolution making a position statement that you're supporting federal legislation with respect to assault weapons and gun laws. So it does not, in my opinion, violate that statutory preemption.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. Mr. Councilman Carlson.
Morning. And I know we talked about this offline, but just so we can have it on the record. The advice we got last week was it...and sorry if I don't remember it exactly right, was that even if we discuss it, we could be in violation, which sounds like a First Amendment issue.
That's not accurate, and I think at the time, the attorney that was here, Mr. Torito, was not aware of the specific terms of this resolution. This resolution is much different. Again, it's a position statement supporting federal legislation. It's in no way a rule or regulation or even, you know, a policy that the city's adopting with respect to the regulation of firearms and ammunition.
And the other thing is, I think another piece of that advice was that even if the city attorney says that it's legal, there's no protection for us anyway. I know with the Ethics Commission, there's not, because I watch some of the cases, but on something like this, if somebody decided to frivolously try to fine us, is there any protection because you've given us advice?
Only if you violate the statute.
Yeah, okay.
Councilman Goots.
Good morning, Ms. Grimes.
Morning.
Thank you for the information. I know we had a brief discussion. I don't know if you and Mr. Shelby have met, previously discussed with the chairman.
Yep.
So I take it that since you're here, if the chairman decides to give up the gavel to make his motion, that we will be in the clear to go forward with this, correct?
Yes, and I'd be happy to prepare the resolution, the final resolution, and bring it back if that's your desire.
And yes, ma'am. I was going to do that at the end.
Okay.
Not at this time, but at the end I was going to do that.
Thank you.
The one other thing I would mention, just if you wouldn't mind to add to the resolution, is just a statement recognizing that you acknowledge the state's authority to preempt this area.
Sure.
And I think then that makes it very clear that you're not attempting to violate that preemption statute.
Councilman Carlson.
Just a clarifying question. I don't know, do you mean that you're going to make the motion at the end of this discussion or at the end of...
End of the meeting.
Could we...I know there are rules, but could, since we have the city attorney, would you mind if we changed the rules to...
Yeah, of course. Yeah, I mean, if it makes you feel more comfortable, I can make the motion right now. Is that what you're...what's the pleasure of everyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if I can...
Yes, sir.
If I can, my recommendation, best practice, would be considering this considers...there's a request by the city attorney to add a provision to it. It'll have to be amended. My suggestion is to take that as part of the motion when you make your motion, if you wish to do it now, and put it on the next regular meeting agenda.
Okay. And you know what I'll do is, just so that we don't have an extended discussion, is I'll make it at the end, but it's going to be predicated upon the city attorney and council reviewing the language. So we would just be...and again, you know, we're certainly in the clear according to Ms. Grimes, and I'm more than willing to rely upon that, but I'll be making that at the end of the council. Councilman Dingfelter.
I'm not sure if you want this now or later. Ms. Grimes, I agree with everything you said, all the way up to the last line, in regard to the state's preemption and to recognizing that. I mean, I think the statute speaks for itself. I am vehemently opposed to everything the state has been doing in terms of preemption, and I hate to give them any kind of kudos or even acknowledgement on that. So we can talk about it later, but that just kind of gives me the willies.
And if I may on that, since I'll be making the motion, I'm not saluting or substantively affirming the law, we're simply acknowledging the binding nature of the law and that we're not trying to circumvent that law.
That's correct.
Which I think is the distinction.
That's correct.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Grimes.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, and all the work of your office. Thank you. Okay. Now, I wanted to, if I may, we have a commendation for number two. I don't believe everybody is here for that one. I don't see here. So if I may, I'm going to move, before we approve the agenda, number three to go is number two. I don't think we need a motion to that effect, but may I have a motion for approval of the agenda and addendum to the agenda?
To move.
And I probably should have done that before. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Citro, or a second by Councilman Goots. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now I would like to call our friend in city councilman, Councilman Goots, to go forward, if you would please, sir, and for our first ATU Employee of the Month. This is something that I was...I brought up maybe a couple of months ago in city council, and I wanted to make sure that we have a method by which, at least once every two months, that we honor a City of Tampa employee for their hard work. We're right to do it for our friends with Tampa Fire and Tampa Police, and, you know, we often hear sometimes, "Why don't we do it for our ATU members and our other City of Tampa workers?" And here in this city, we honor work, and I think that's what this is about. So Councilman Goots, take it away, sir, the first one.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for your leadership, and thank you for appointing me to bestow this great honor on our city employees, our general employees. And I must say, when you made that motion and we got that second approval, I was elated by it, because the everyday worker, they want the accolades as well, just as our police and fire personnel, our first response. I know we give them a lot of cools, but we have to give the people that are on the ground doing the work every day their cools as well. If we could have the ATU President, Mr. Steve Simon, come up, please, and let this slide and let's come up. This being our first inaugural commendation, I'm going to let Mr. Simon call up the awardee and say a few words, and then from future times, we'll work together on it, all right?
Yes. I'd like to call up Jennifer Canciola.
Come on down. Come on down.
Jennifer Canciola is the Lead Payroll Technician with the Revenue and Finance Department. Jennifer comports herself as a leader in the payroll section of the Finance and Revenue Department. She is extremely conscientious in her duties and takes the completion of the biweekly payroll process for every employee in the city personally, regardless of the time commitments it may require. The biggest going beyond the call of duty example occurred this past year when Jennifer was called to perform as the acting supervisor of the section. She supervised the section for more than a year with great skill and poise. She was polished, creative, hardworking, caring, determined, and highly successful, and the biweekly, quarterly, and annual payroll processes went off without a hitch due to her skill and leadership. Jennifer is a go-getter and has the chops to back it up. She is a sterling example of the high-quality employees the ATU provides to the City of Tampa.
Congratulations.
Thank you. (APPLAUSE). I wasn't prepared to give a speech or anything like that, but I just want to say thank you to everybody that has supported me and put in the nomination for this. Again, it is a team effort, so I'm glad I have my department here, and I just want to say thank you.
Well, I know there's a gentleman here that has some gifts for you.
Can I sit down?
Yeah, you...we'll step over here, the pro car will come over here and let these guys...
I would like to start. I would like to present from ATU Local 1464.
Well, thank you.
All right, absolutely.
Thank you. Do I stand here or...
Morning, council. Jim Carson, Bill Curry Ford. It's an honor, Jennifer, to present the first award for a city employee.
Thank you.
So on behalf of the Curry family, we would like to present you full detail. Hand wash your car.
Thank you.
Carpet, and also a free oil change.
Oh, thank you. (APPLAUSE).
Good morning, city council. Dustin Portillo with Casper's Company McDonald's Restaurants. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
I think you should open up your own CPA, and I'll be your first client.[1010.62][1010.62](LAUGHTER). Quite extraordinary. Here's some gifts for you.
Oh, thank you.
There's no oil change, but we do have some Big Macs and some other Nick goodies inside there.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Good morning, city council. My name's John Wells with Stepstone and Heavy Transport, and we'd like to present you with a gift on behalf of Stepstone and Heavy Transport.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Good morning, council. Pete Brevy, Busch Gardens. As I say every month when we do the police and fire, I think it's a great award, and I'm very, very happy to see this has been extended to all city employees, because as was mentioned earlier, it takes a village of people to keep a city functioning and running efficiently and smoothly. And as a former city employee, I've seen your name and heard your name and seen your emails for a bunch of years, and I'm glad that I finally got to see you, put a face with it. But on behalf of Busch Gardens, we'd like to give you four tickets to our park to enjoy with your family.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Steve McAlinesi. Pete is only happy because he got his check.[1078.01][1078.01](LAUGHTER). No, really, on behalf of a couple of different folks, Prestige Portraits, we're going to provide you with gift packets so you can go have your portraits taken. On behalf of the Tampa Metropolitan YMCA, we're going to provide you with a gift certificate that you can go and enjoy yourself at the Y. And on the Chiches Restaurant Group, breakfast, lunch, or dinner, $50. And Yummy House China Bistro, you can go enjoy yourself there for lunch or dinner. Congratulations, and again, the city employees do a great job, and we're happy to have you here. They're probably one of the most dedicated groups that we have, and we are so lucky to have them performing all of the services that keep the city moving in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Hi, council. I just wanted to add, which I didn't say earlier, that we've come up with a slogan for us, which is ATU Local 1464, "We Keep the City of Tampa Running", and it's based on a collaborative of all of the many departments within the city, which in essence do keep the City of Tampa running. So I'm very happy that we have Jennifer as the first ATU Employee of the Month, and thank you for the program.
Yes, sir. It's our pleasure. Thank you. Councilman Dingfelter.
Jennifer, and Steve, and everybody who's here, well, this is long overdue. Rank and file, ATU, all the employees in the city, you're the unsung heroes of the city. And we appreciate you, and you're number one, and you'll never forget it. We'll never forget it. And it's fantastic, fantastic day for our city. And on a lighter note, as city employees, we all appreciate the fact you get our paychecks out on time, so...
(LAUGHTER).
But seriously, thank you for all you do. Thank you for everybody who's supporting, sharing, and the rest of your team there. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Councilman Citro.
Thank you. This just goes to show that the employees of the City of Tampa are all a team. Fire couldn't work without Water Department, and I applaud Solid Waste every time that there is a parade, they get it done and taken care of within four or five hours, and our streets are opened back up. And without them, they couldn't take away our waste. Stormwater, every part of our city works together as a team. I'm glad to see that the ATU is now finally recognizing the employees. Congratulations to being the inaugural employee. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much, ma'am, and like Councilman Dingfelter and Citro said, you're the first one, so congratulations for that, and you're going to be the first of many, and we thank you for all your hard work. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. (APPLAUSE). Oh, I have to do this.
Okay, if the nice ladies from Radiant Kitchen could please come forward, and Radiant Hands... It is my pleasure here today to introduce the leadership and the staff and the hard workers of Radiant Kitchen. Radiant Hands is an organization that for 14 years has helped resettled refugees here in the Tampa Bay area and throughout Florida. And under the organization of Radiant Hands is Radiant Kitchen, something that started here in Tampa. I read about this effort in the Tampa Bay Times, and it really, really touched me a great deal, and so I wanted to give a Tampa City Council commendation to this wonderful organization. This organization takes refugees from Syria, right? Now, correct me if I'm wrong, ladies, you're all from Syria. Okay. Refugees from Syria and puts them to work in a local kitchen in New Tampa. And y'all are at the Dash of Salt and Pepper, correct?
Yes.
And that is run by my...I know Luffi, who's a good friend of mine. He's a gentleman who lives out in New Tampa. He's a Palestinian-American, a very interesting gentleman who is a Vietnam-era veteran, a Marine. His brother was a Vietnam veteran, and I believe his nephew right now serves overseas being deployed. He's a very fine gentleman. And he gives these women their kitchen to help them do the work that they do. But the real reason that we wanted to honor these women was for their experiences. I mean, to be a refugee is something that requires a great deal of suffering, but it's really, really the story of this country whenever you take a look at what really forms this country. Many of us are derived from refugees and people who have come from all over the world here, fleeing terror, fleeing oppression, fleeing violence, and we come here to the United States. And we know that throughout the last several years, part of that bit, what to me is, and I think to all of us, is that core American value of being a welcoming country to those who are fleeing violence, those who are fleeing terror, those who are fleeing oppression, continues to dwindle, at least whenever it comes to our leadership. And so, based upon that basic idea, and myself as a proud son of Cuban exiles and Cuban refugees, my parents came here in 1960 fleeing Castro in Cuba, and my late father actually came here to Tampa, and the house that he lived in as a 16-year-old off East Columbus is still there. And I always tell people that the same amount of love and care and compassion that was there for my family in 1960, I want to be there for these women. And this organization helps make that happen, and that is why we are so proud to honor these women here today. So I would like to present a campus city council commendation to our dear friends at Radiant Kitchen, which is a project of Radiant Hands. And if you want to speak here...
I want to say first of all, thank you so much. This is a great honor for us all. We are beyond humble, because we've been honored this, you know, this much. Those ladies, they came together in this country, having a lot of barriers, they having, you know, minimal language, they were not able to support their family by going out into the business world and working, and they tried to figure something out by, you know, just catering for the community. What we did is actually supporting them. What we did, we believed in them, and believing is one of the key words for bringing people into a better position. And this recognition means a lot to them. They're so excited this morning. They were saying to me that this type of things brings us back to life. We feel that this is the country we belong to, we want to contribute to, we want to be part of, and we really appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Council.
Any one from the dais? Councilman Carlson.
I just wanted to thank you for what you're doing to help immigrants feel welcomed. Everybody has an immigrant story in the United States. My family came here in the 1880s from Sweden, and they were welcomed, and I'm very thankful that you all are helping to welcome the next generation. And if we can do anything to be hospitable and welcome them, please let us know as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilman Dingfelter.
Yeah, likewise, this hits home with me. My grandparents escaped Germany before World War II. If they hadn't, it would have been very bad. Perhaps more importantly today, Mr. Chairman, I so appreciate you doing this, and ladies, the good work that you do, and I hope it sends a very small message to Washington that the policies that Washington and the White House pursues against immigrants is just downright wrong on so many levels. And you guys are now, you're Americans, and you're obviously proud to be Americans, and we're all that way. We all came from somewhere at some point, and here we are as a great melting pot, and we're so glad to have you and the good work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Citro.
Thank you very much. Assalamu alaikum.
Wa alaikum salam.
I would thank you very, very much for the things that you have done, the great things that you have done, and I'm sure that if you need any help, I will be there for you. Alls you need to do is call my office. Ladies, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Assalamu alaikum, my sisters.
Wa alaikum salam.
You know, it's a great day when people are recognized for the work they do. And you're doing the work. I've been to several events at the mosques, at the different mosques, and my funeral home has been fortunate to be a part of the family. But I would say you keep up the work. It's always a fight. We've got to keep fighting every day, and I understand those struggles. So you fight on, you fight on. God bless you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, and real quick, I'm a proud son of immigrants. I'm a first-generation American. Like Councilman Vieira, my mother and my grandparents escaped Cuba and came here in '61, and my father moved from Sicily in '81, not as a refugee, obviously, but met my mother, and here I am. But this community, the foundation of this community is built on the work of immigrants. I remember walking down Franklin Street a couple of years ago, and a reporter asked me about the climate in Tampa, the racial climate in Tampa. And I said, "You know, we're a city that's built on diversity and inclusion, going back to the 1800s, you know, with our founding, we had African-American members of city council. We had Ebor City and beyond, Sicilian immigrants, Cuban immigrants, Spanish immigrants, Italian immigrants. We have a strong Jewish community, a strong Korean community that a lot of people really don't bring up, a strong Muslim community." But that's the beauty of this city. Someone once told me, "There's no place in the world like Tampa. There's no place in the world like Ebor City." And, you know, we can look at our history of how we are where we are today because of the hard work and the sacrifices of so many people that left everything behind for political reasons or for whatever it was to come here and start a new life. And I'm proud to say, you know, that I'm a native son of this city, but the city that's been so good to my family, just like you are taking care of the new generation coming in and making sure that they feel welcome and are included and can start their lives here. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And before y'all go, I...y'all, some small tokens of just how honored we are to have y'all here. So we got your flowers.
Oh, wow. I'm so tired of you. Thank you so much.
There you go. With a little American flag to show y'all that this is what the United States is all With a little American flag to show y'all that this is what the United States is all about.
Thank you. This is for the city council. It's a very simple, you know.
Oh, thank you.
This is one of the desserts that the ladies prepare at home, and we want you all to enjoy.
Well, there you go. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you.
And I'll just take the blocks.
Don't worry. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll take the block. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll take the block. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to item number four. With us today is Beth Alden, Executive Director of the Hillsborough MPO. And she's going to provide an overview of the 2045 Long Range Transportation Plan. Ms. Alden, take it away.
We have the presentation up on the screen.
Good morning, Council. Thank you for having me. I don't know how to follow those courageous ladies. I'm a little bit choked up. But I'm Beth Alden. Thank you for having me here this morning. I'm the Director of the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Transportation. We're your group responsible for long-range planning, big picture planning for transportation, connecting city of Tampa, unincorporated Hillsborough County, Plant City, Temple Terrace to the rest of the region, multiple agencies with the goal of working together so that we're all pulling in the same direction. And so I'm here this morning to give you a brief update. City of Tampa is very ably represented on the MPO board by Councilman Viera, Councilman Meniscalco, and Councilman Citro. And we greatly appreciate the leadership that you bring to the MPO board. This is a significant time for us at the MPO in that we are on the cusp of finalizing the Long Range Transportation Plan, which is updated every five years. And so that's what I'm going to be talking with you about briefly this morning. So why do we do this Long Range Transportation Plan? It is our community's story about what's important and what we're going to focus on together and why. It is built on the comprehensive plans of all four local governments. So the priorities that you have set and that your neighboring jurisdictions have set and the direction that you want to go is looking towards the future, directing federal and state dollars towards those investments that together we value. It is required to look at at least every 20 years. And our deadline for adopting this update is in November. So we are towards the end of our two-year process of updating the plan. There have been a number of phases of this, including two phases of public outreach. One of the things about this plan is that there will still be a number of unknowns at the time that we must adopt it. So our adoption date is on November 5th, but there will still be a lot of questions. And so the plan sets broad direction and provides flexibility for future decisions. And these are very exciting future decisions. And so we're really excited to have the opportunity to include these things in the plan. But one of those points is the transportation improvements that can be afforded with the 1% surtax for transportation that our voters approved last November. So this is coming on years and years of us all working together and looking at the needs of this community. And now there is an opportunity to show in this, in our long-range plan, how those needs can be addressed. But there are still going to be a lot of unanswered questions in November about exactly which road projects, exactly which rapid transit projects. And so we're building the framework for this and leaving flexibility. The Florida Department of Transportation is continuing to look at the downtown interchange. The Expressway Authority has several major studies ongoing, and we're going to be looking over the next year at the feasibility of an I-275 Boulevard concept. So a lot of things still up in the air. But we can, I think, get a clear idea of the overall direction that this community would like to go in. We have a lot of resources now that are available for transportation. So Florida DOT is the biggest partner in addressing this community's needs. Hillsborough County and HART, with the funding from the sales tax, would be also able to take significant steps. The MPO sets priorities for some federal grants that amounts to a fairly small share of the funding that's available for transportation. So the bigger role for the MPO is developing that shared vision across jurisdictions and modes, prioritizing projects for all partners to consider funding, and being a forum for identifying shared issues and collaborative strategies. So the funding available to meet Hillsborough's needs is very different with and without the surtax. So without that 1% surtax, 55% of the available funds would be required to go to Florida DOT's Strategic Intermodal System. So those would be the improvements on predominantly the interstate highway system. With the surtax, we have the ability to increase funding for transit systems for bus and rail. We would have significantly more funding for safe and reliable roadway systems on our city and county roads. As part of the plan update, we have asked the public twice in major public opinion surveys about their priorities. Phase one, we did as a tri-county effort with 10,000 respondents, and some of the things we heard were that people would like alternatives to driving, minimizing outward growth and reinvesting in established neighborhoods, strengthening downtowns and creating more places like them, using new technologies to reduce congestion. We followed up phase one with an outreach survey last summer focusing on just Hillsborough County specifically, that had more than 5,000 participants, good representation from across the county. Nearly 90% of the respondents were Hillsborough County residents, 90% were workers in Hillsborough County. And we asked questions about specific projects on the map. There were 15 different projects that we asked people to vote yes or no. And I'll just hit a couple of highlights of those. So it was interesting that the projects that had the most wide support were rapid transit projects. So up at the top of this list, you see reuse the freight rail tracks, rapid transit, a new corridor from downtown to the airport, extend the downtown streetcar, create more greenway and trail corridors, right-sized Tampa multi-lane roads. And we gave them some examples of some of the roads that have perhaps more lanes than they need to, that could be reallocated for walking, biking, or rapid transit. We also asked about the downtown interchange, which there has been a lot of public discussion about the last few years. We asked about four different scenarios for the downtown interchange, from no build to full rebuild with express lanes. And of the four different scenarios, the one that was the least favored, and this is county-wide, was the no-build scenario, including residents of the city of Tampa, did not favor doing nothing. On the other hand, over at the right-hand side, the full rebuild with express lanes that would have required more than 200 parcels. This is a divisive project. You either love it or you hate it. There's a lot of one-star ratings and a lot of five-star ratings. The concept that was widely supported, including support from city of Tampa residents, was called the Safety Traffic Quick Fix Concept. And that concept has actually now been proposed by Florida Department of Transportation as their recommended approach to move forward with the downtown interchange. So the portion of funds that would go towards major projects like the downtown interchange and other projects on the interstate highway system, that winds up being about 33% of the funding available. The rest of the funds are split among some of the other priorities that people have continued to speak about, including good repair and resilience, a vision of zero traffic deaths, so safety improvements, smart cities and technology, and real choices for not driving, including an expansion of the bus system and our greenway and trail system. So there's a lot of things in those categories, everything from pavement and bridge to complete street treatments, smart traffic signals and advanced traffic management systems, expanded bus services and trails. And in our major projects category, rapid transit and dedicated right-of-way, interchanges and additional three lanes on major roadways. I'm going to hit some highlights of that last category. So rapid transit operating in its own right-of-way, what are some opportunities there? So the survey, widespread support for reusing freight rail tracks, downtown-to-airport rapid transit in the new quarter, extending the downtown streetcar, water transit. We've tested all of these for ridership. And the bright red line that you see here on this map is the one with the greatest ridership. So that would be that central core corridor connecting downtown Tampa with the USF area and the West Shore District, Tampa International Airport, going through some of Tampa's densest neighborhoods and making those connections, connecting people to jobs. On the Strategic Intermodal System, again, that's the Florida DOT system, mainly of interstate highways. The concept is for new express lanes focusing on I-4, I-75, and I-275 west of downtown Tampa and across the Howard Franklin Bridge. Solman Expressway would have additional lanes both in South Tampa and going eastward towards Brandon. There will be a new overpass on US-41 near Causeway Boulevard, close to the entrance to Port Tampa Bay. There's a lot of congestion there. Downtown interchange, that is that quick-fix project that Florida DOT has now recommended as their preferred alternative. And I-275 north of downtown Tampa, adding two general-purpose lanes within the existing And so finally, on some of our county and city major roads, because we have, we do not have decisions yet, for example, from the county commission about specific projects to be funded with the sales tax, we have done a congestion analysis, we've done a job support analysis, and identified projects for consideration. There are also some projects that could be moved forward on US highways with Florida DOT funds, such as portions of US-301, 41, and US-92. So we're very excited that this will bring us to better performance across our system. So investing in that state of good repair will be able to maintain all of our roads so that they resurface on time. With the Vision Zero program, investing in those traffic safety improvements, we can bring our crash rates down 35%. With advanced traffic management systems, we can improve travel time reliability 30% over what it would otherwise be with our congestion growth. And with expanding the bus and trail system, we can now be able to provide that bus service on approximately 800 miles of road with the frequent service. So after the plan is adopted, of course, there are still many decisions to be made by our partners, including you. And we will be continuing to monitor, how are we doing in terms of our system performance? And how can we support you all with addressing questions, challenges that our community continues to have as we move forward with transportation investments? But that concludes my presentation. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, ma'am. And please keep clapping. Thank you, Councilman Carlson, Councilman Gutz, did you, Dingfelder, and Citro?
Yeah, two questions. One is, you mentioned the Boulevard concept in the beginning. Is it still under serious investigation, and what's the status of that?
So this is a concept that the neighborhood residents along I-275 north of downtown Tampa have asked the MPO to look at. And so what we'll be doing is, it's kind of a feasibility study. We're going to start out by asking them, asking many other stakeholders around the region, what are the issues that you want us to look into? You know, and we've already heard a lot of questions about this, you know, where will the traffic go? What is the vision for rapid transit in this quarter? How would emergency evacuation be handled? If we did see this kind of transformation, what does it mean in terms of the development? And how would that relate to the neighborhoods on both sides? Folks have said they don't want another Dale Mayberry Highway, for example. So how would you make sure it wasn't that? So there are many questions. And so the first thing that we would be doing is a roundup of all of the questions. And then we'll come back with a process for how do we get answers to that.
We have Josh Frank coming in January, I think, to present to us. Will you have an answer before then, you think, or after?
No, we'd be just getting started with the study.
Just getting started, okay. The second question is, and this is feedback I hear over and over again from the community, that the Tampa Bay Partnership in particular, the community feels has disproportionate power in swaying the directions of DOT and the transportation planning. And a lot of folks in the community feel that they haven't been listened to where the Tampa Bay Partnership has. I'm happy to see the survey that you all have done, and it looks like you are listening to what the community says. Can you give us any insights into how the input of a group like the Tampa Bay Partnership is now versus the group of 5,000 constituents that have given feedback?
The Tampa Bay Partnership is one of many stakeholder organizations that provides input into the process. But as you've seen, we continue to present what we're hearing from a really large survey.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Gutz and Councilman Dingfelder.
Good morning. I had a special meeting with Secretary Gwen's group, private meeting in reference to Floria Braska. I understand he made a commitment at the MPO in reference to Floria Braska not being closed. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's very exciting. That was just announced at our meeting Tuesday morning. And so there are a couple of short videos that are on the Tampa Bay Next website in case people want more information.
And that's why I wanted to make that body know in case they did not know that. And I was glad to be a part of that special meeting with them.
Yes, very exciting.
So that's big news for my community, not closing what I call a major artery for really goods and services, people getting to where they got to go, even the downtown folks being they cut across, get on that interstate. So I'm very pleased with Secretary Gwen's group and Ms. Chloe Coney, who helped set up that special meeting with me and others. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder.
Oh, Gutz, great minds think alike. My first question was Floria Braska, and I'm thrilled to hear that news because we have heard some large outcries from that community. So it sounds like we're heading in the right direction on that. My second question, Beth, and you and I have worked together a long time, and you also work closely with the Planning Commission, and I think are housed over there with them, relates to density. And I'm a little concerned returning to council, when I see this trend toward, you know, they talk about the urban villages, okay, strictly within the city now, but they talk about the urban villages and how we need to increase density in the urban villages and blah, 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 and sort of a peanut butter approach. Just spread it across wherever we can, let's increase density. And I'm seeing that a lot from the Planning Commission, even our planning staff. I don't know how you guys chime into that as well. And I understand the concept is they want to increase density so that will help justify, you know, mass transit, and, you know, that's been a lot of the explanation. But I guess what I want to say is, is the concept of transit-oriented development, I think is a really crucial one. Because as we head toward mass transit at different levels, whether or not it's bus, BRT, or actual rail, there's a great opportunity for transit-oriented development. So in other words, at the stations, at those stops, we can get some significant density that's needed. But what I'm, my point is, is in between those stops and in the established neighborhoods, I don't know that they need the pressure of increased density. Because our constituents complain to us regularly about traffic on their small little streets and, you know, getting in and out of the Columbus Avenues and the McBills and those sort of things that were never designed, you know, to be major thoroughfares, but they're becoming that way. So if you'd... So I, if, you've given us good messages, if there's a message I want to send back over there to, to the 18th floor over there is, is let's focus a little bit more on intense density in small areas with the TOD concept and less of the peanut butter approach.
That's, that's an excellent point, and, and I think it reflects what we've heard in our survey too, that people want to protect the established neighborhoods, you know, and one thing that we've heard over and over again is that there may be a desire to see changes on some of the commercial strip corridors, and maybe those are opportunities for, for us to look at changes, such as in Seminole Heights, for example, that would really tie into a transit investment strategy, particularly as we're, as we're looking at where we focus our bus rapid transit corridors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, as Councilman Maniscalco, Councilman Vera, and myself, who sit on the MPO board, we have seen this presentation, and I thank you for bringing it to city council, I just want to thank you for all the hard work that you do for the MPO, thank you very much.
Thank you for your leadership.
Well said, like a gentleman, thank you Ms. Alden, we appreciate all your hard work, thank you ma'am, thank you very much. Okay, next we move forward to public comment, if any, and so that we know, how many people are here for public comment? Raise your hand if you would, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, okay, we're gonna, we have about a 10 o'clock to go forward with staff reports, so I'm gonna first take people who are speaking on something, is anybody here to speak specifically on something on the agenda?
Oh, no, not the business.
Okay, anybody?
The heritage, about the immigrant thing and all that stuff, I'm an immigrant.
Okay, that's on the agenda, you may, you barely got in there, go for it. Okay, so we have one, two, I'm sorry, just raise your hands if you could, one, two, three, four, five, six, 18 minutes, okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll be about 10 minutes late for the 10 o'clock, we'll get everybody in, so you have up to three minutes, which means you don't have to use all of them, go ahead sir.
Yes, my name is Janelle LeVar Scott, in my native term Hebrew, it means Yahweh's merciful to wash, it's a gift from God, that's what he gave y'all just now. Okay, you see that boat behind y'all, Christopher Columbus brought a lot of my people over here, right? And right now, we got an identity crisis going on in our community that needs to be addressed. Right now, there are so many men in the county jail whose Sixth Amendment that's being violated in the city of Tampa is the only one that violates this right for us to have access to the law library. That, that violates our right for due process because we don't have the legal material to help our lawyer prepare our case, so I'm trying to find out, what are y'all gonna do about that?
Councilman Gudzidj.
My brother, give it to me one more time, you said the law library at the jail is not being?
It's, we cannot get it, they force us to go pro se, and it's the only place that it's done like that. St. Pete got their law library, the boys got access to their law library, Tampa is the only one where you can't get access to the law library.
Okay, well, what I'll do is, I'll make a commitment that I'll call.
And I done been battered here plenty times, my Facebook page is, is public by every government official whatsoever, took the greatest point, was not given medical attention whatsoever, and I got recordings where they verified this stuff, so not only are we not only just being misused and abused, we are being neglected of a voice to be heard.
Well, let me, let me say this, that we're the city.
And I stand.
And sir, if I may, sir, sir, if I may, Councilman Gudzidj was speaking, just let him finish.
May I rebuttal?
Wait, wait, no.
Okay, you just took my authority, go ahead.
You're, you're, you're asking for different things, so I need to tell you how to access what you're, what you're trying to get to, and a lot of things you're talking about are county issues, but.
It's in the city though.
You're not listening to me, you gotta listen to me, okay? If I'm gonna give you information, you gotta listen to me till you can receive it. Yes, it's in the city, but we don't have authority over the county jail, we don't have authority over the public library, we're the city, so we only have limited power for what we do, but I can refer and ask questions to get some information, so that's what I'll do for you as far as the library in the jail, I will ask the sheriff about that. As far as your other issue, that's all county commission issue that you have to go to them to ask for them to make motions to look into, but as far as your issue about the jail, I can just personally call the sheriff and ask him what's going on with it, and he can give me an answer.
Because right now.
Let me finish.
Okay, whenever you get to.
And then when, when I finish talking, you finish, you can go next door and give your number to the aide in next door, and then I'll personally call you and tell you what was the response from the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office, okay?
Okay, now I'm, I thought I had to finish speaking now?
Yes.
Okay, and also, I'm trying to find out, why is it that you, every time I come here, you guys, the councilmen, always push it off on the county? I don't understand that, I just don't understand that, I really don't understand that. Y'all trying to deaf ear to stuff that really need to be addressed, because right now, there are many men that can have their cases overturned because of due process for not having access to legal material, which is the Sixth Amendment. I rest my case, God bless y'all.
Thank you sir, we appreciate it, next please.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. Once upon a time, there were three siblings.
And ma'am, I'm sorry, your name please.
Oh, okay, I'm glad to say that. My name is Ursula, Ursula Odom, and I am the CEO of Sulu Two, and we make old, new in everything we do, we capture, preserve, and present legacy information in any way possible, and that's what I'm doing today. So again, once upon a time, there were three siblings with three spouses, and five out of those six worked for GTE data, well, GTE, and the reason that's important is because little did we know that one person, and someone that you all probably know, was responsible for either initiating or leading the effort to change GTE and the surrounding community so that African Americans could be in management, because we were in management. So is this about me? No, it's about everyone in this room, because when I figured out all the things that Mr. Hammond did, then there's not a person in the room, okay, I'm not sure how to operate this, there's not a person in the room that's not affected by something he did, including the cable that you're watching today, cable television, he and his company was the one that made it happen here in Tampa. We were wondering why black people got cable before anybody else, it's because his company was successful, and his competing company was not, and he ultimately got the entire So why am I here? It's not about the past even, and I'll come back to this if I have time, because there's so many things on there, it's about current times. This is a young lady who I helped to, helped her understand that the person that she was standing before is the reason that she could go to the University of Tampa, because he initiated a suit to allow black people to go there, and she is Miss Black Tampa, I mean, Black Florida. So even current day, there is a relativity to what he did. Is it about just past and present? No, it's about the future as well, this is the legacy wall, this is at Edison Elementary. This young man who has James Hammond looking directly at him, saying that you can do it too, basically because Mr. Hammond was the first African American to have a, an electrical contracting company in the state of Florida. So he touched all of us. So why am I here? Because I would like to see something named for him that is, is extraordinary as the Jim Walters Building, when I arrived here, that was everything, and maybe it could be Jim Hammond's Boulevard, Hammond Boulevard, or the Hammond African American Museum, and based on what was just said, maybe the Hammond Express. So I'm just suggesting to you, please consider doing something for Mr. Hammond.
Thank you very much ma'am, we appreciate it. Councilman Dingfelder, really quick, because we've got.
Yes, very quickly, I just want to say that I, I knew Mr. Hammond later in his life, and very impressive, impressive man, and you've just enlightened me on some of the things I didn't know about him, but I think we should continue this effort to try and honor him appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am, next please.
Good morning, my name is Pastor Frank Williams, located at 1112 East Sky Street, Paradise Missionary Baptist Church. I want to read some scriptures to y'all, I hope you all pay close attention to, coming from the Book of Esther's, I'm gonna read for the sixth chapter as quick as I can. On that night could no, not the king sleep, and he commanded to bring the book of record of the chronicle, and they were read before the king, and it was found written that Mordecai had told Bickdiner and Therese, two of the king's chamberlain, the keeper of the door, who sought to lay hands on a man named King Ahassorir. And the king said, what honor and dignity has been done to Mordecai for this? Then said the king's servant, that minister unto him, there is nothing done for him. And the king said, who is in the court? Now Haman was coming to the upper court of the king's house, to speak unto the king, to hang Mordecai on the gallows that he had prepared for him. The king's servant said unto him, behold, Haman stand in the court. And the king said, let him come in. Now watch this, I want y'all to understand, Haman was the man that was gonna build a gallows for Mordecai, and come to find out, he done lied, he wanted to kill all the Jews. I don't know whether any Jews in here today or not, but that's what he wanted to do, just like some of the white folk want to kill all the black folk. And we have to understand, the creation of God, we not, we not just, because of our color of our skin, we African American, all of us are African American, God started his creation in Africa, and God said, who can change the color of a, of a man's skin? Nobody, and we thank God we are who we are. And I know you all don't like for me to come down here because I want to preach the word of God, and just like the guy said in the month, oh, we just got a few minutes, few minutes, few minutes, you get them other people all, all day long, and then one didn't want to cut our time, and you got one, I don't know what you talking about, but you talking about the 20, 30 to 32 billion dollars. Is they gonna put in that money in, in, in the African community? No, not gonna put a brown penny in there, and you all need to cover up them, uh, sinkholes you got out there, and let us build something on our land. God dedicated that land to the black folk, and here we want to take it and put what we want, make swamp holes out of them and all that stuff. It's ridiculous how y'all treat black folk, and now you talking about the Super Bowl coming here? Every man that come here, need to get on their knees and pray for this city, it's one of the worst cities in the world.
Thank you very much sir, next please.
Thank you to God that we still here. I don't care about y'all getting mad with me.
Good morning, Connie Burton, when you talk about the history and how proud people are, we're proud that we are still standing and we have survived this Holocaust here in America, 246 years of direct slavery, followed by 99 years of Jim Crow. That's why we don't have Central Avenue anymore.
That's right.
Decisions being made, and so when they're talking about long-term transportation goals, if it's not talking about how the economic impact of, from that transportation goal is gonna help our community, it is meaningless to us. 34th Street shut down, 40th Street shut down, our major economic hubs back in the day has been drained up like a desert, and it is coming because, you know why? We are still living in our Holocaust moment. Don't get confused because you see one or two of us progressing, the majority of us is on this side of the aisle, and so why do we come down here? Is because we want you to know constantly that the cries and the concerns of our community, if you had a chance to look at the Tampa Bay Times this week, it talked about the Housing Authority having a backlog of maybe 25,000 people on the waiting list. We got three African people in this city that is over and controlling housing, Jerome Ryan, Vanessa McClurey, and Cheryl Howard, yet, they have yet to come to this council, you might can't control that county, but they have yet to come to this city council to tell you how they gonna improve the condition of homeless people and people that do not make within that AMI that can afford $200,000 homes that are being built in our community. Right now, the floodgates in East Tampa is for the picking of big developers, even if we get a down payment assistance on a $230,000 home that is being built by the CDC that y'all love, we would need $100,000 knocked off of that so people at a Walmart or a fast food chain that go to work every day can afford that. Our people are living in slummer, slums, and hotels all up and down Hillsborough and Nebraska Avenue, and y'all aware of it. You talked about it on your campaign speech, so did the mayor, we're 40, we are several months into your election bid, and as a crisis of emergencies, nothing has been done. I would hope that you look at item number nine through 11 of that budget that you're gonna approve of today, and any money that the Tampa Police Department will receive and grant is given back to the communities that have been harmed. You got your big old marijuana dispensary coming through our community, and your hands are clean because you say you can't do nothing, but we are watching each and every one of you, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Carlson, just really fast, because we're trying to get to the 10 o'clock.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, I just, just, just so you know, and any, anybody who's watching, based on the input from you and, and others, there are a lot of changes going on in the city right now, and one of the biggest is that the city's looking for a new head of economic development, and I think all of us have been giving feedback to the, to the mayor's office, and in particular John Bennett, the Chief of Staff, and, and we've been saying, I've been saying that, that the person needs to focus on economic development, not just real estate development, and the whole city, not just downtown. If you and, and, and any of your friends or colleagues have feedback on what kind of person the city should hire, please send that feedback to John Bennett, because that person is going to be really critical to getting all of this addressed, and all of us look forward to partnering with him. Also separately, as the CRA, we've asked to have a new executive director, and if we get that approved, we're gonna be looking for a person there also, and we're gonna create a strategic plan for the CRA, and we need input from the community on what kind of person to hire and how the strategic plan should go forward. So hopefully, as these positions are in place, if we all listen, it'll take a few more months, but hopefully we'll get a lot of change.
Thank you very much, Councilman, next please. And these are the last three folks I see here for public comment, just making sure folks stood up, because we're gonna get to our staff reports.
Morning, the name is Mintis Not, and the word we as African people have to keep using is reparations, because everything you hear, everything you see, it's been a 600-year experience Holocaust, if that's the word most people are familiar with and they like to use, over a period of time when it was atrocities committed against mostly white people, but that same Holocaust was committed against millions of Africans. King Leopold started the Holocaust in a certain way, and it continues right on to this day when a man in Texas is murdered in his own home, and somebody get a 10-year sentence, and our kids get caught with a nickel sack of marijuana, and we get a 20 and 30, 40 and 50-year sentence. It's something that's wrong with that system, something very wrong with it, and the reality is, it's a certain kind of hatred that people have for black people when we speak our mind, when we speak, we ain't hurting nobody else, we just talking about what we see and how we see it, and how we interpret it, and it's a certain kind of hatred because of, know from being here for decades, when two individuals was here, was hauled off to jail, threatened with prison for just coming out here and speaking our mind, for just saying it's too much alcohol and alcohol and tobacco advertising inside the African community, it's too many liquor licenses inside the African community, and you know what? Nobody cares about the African, absolutely, positively, nobody, N-O-B-O-D-Y, I don't even know how to spell that good, because nobody do anything about it, and they look at you and they give awards, and they have ceremonies, and they do all kind of dumb, stupid, ignorant stuff, and it proves itself, all you have to do is live long enough, Brother Moses Knox used to come down here for decades, and you just live long enough, and you see history repeat itself. The same people that look and smile with you and say, hey, there's a transition going on in society, and it's being more progressive, is the same people that didn't hear, hey, you got too much liquor in our community, now you want to put marijuana in our community. And we're affected most by adversely, not on the profit end, it's all the white people got the liquor license, and not saying we want to benefit on the profit end, and it's all the white people got the marijuana dispensary license, and it's all the black people got the charges behind it.
That's right.
And no decriminalization, none, none in sight, they just trying to find new ways to incarcerate more African people.
That's right.
That have to stop, and that have to change, and the word is reparations, we as African people should be learning that word and know what it means, and know we owe 600 trillion.
Thank you very much sir, we appreciate it, next please.
Good morning, council, my name is Phyllis Fleming.
I live on Davis Islands and I represent the Davis Islands Stewardship Committee. With me today is Debbie Zomerman, who represents the Davis Islands Civic Association. Our community plan was approved in two thousand and seven. The city's planning program began implementing community planning through form-based codes in February of two thousand and eight. Between two thousand and eight and two thousand and eleven, we applauded the creation and successful implementation of the community plan and form-based code overlay for Seminole Heights. Since two thousand and twelve, Davis Islands has requested assistance in creating our own form-based code overlay and we have been rebuffed for seven years. I'm in recent receipt of a memo dated September seventeenth from Planning and Development denying our request again. These continuous denials for assistance are having a deleterious effect on the character of our neighborhood and our community planning efforts are being stymied. We are here this morning to thank you for raising this issue with staff and ask that the process for the development and implementation of the Davis Islands form-based code overlay be immediately integrated into Planning and Development's work program. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am, next please. And Councilman Dingfelder, wait, 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 just two seconds, please, really fast.
Yeah, I just wanted to tell Ms. Fleming that at the end of today's meeting, I will make a motion.
Thank you so much for that, Councilman.
That was two seconds. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our last one, go ahead, sir.
Morning. My name is Albert Dawson, my address is ten nineteen East Twelfth Avenue. This would probably be directed to Mr. Luis, who is, uh, in charge of District Seven. Since nineteen eighty-seven up until today's time, Twelfth Avenue from Nebraska, which would be an avenue up to Thirteenth Street, has not been even looked at. And I have watched this happen. So I'd like to know from Mr. Luis, does he have any plans of resurfacing Twelfth Avenue from Nebraska all the way down to the retaining pond, which would be about Thirteenth Street?
And we usually don't answer questions during a public comment, but what I can do is have you get in touch with my aide and I'd be more than happy to meet with you and frankly go take a look at it personally. So, uh, my aide Brandon is loyally coming out right now and we can set up a meeting.
Very good, thank you very much.
We appreciate it, thank you, sir. Okay. Uh, next we move forward to our, um, uh, staff reports. And I have items sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five, I believe, for staff reports. Is anyone here for sixty-one?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, Assistant City Attorney Jared Simpson. I provided a, uh, report on the questions that were asked. Uh, first of extending the disabled parking hours. Uh, there is no existing ordinance on that issue. Uh, so the, the council would need to pass an ordinance if, um, it was the pleasure of council to extend the hours. At the time that I wrote my memo, there had not been a financial impact analysis. I think that, uh, that was later done. And there is another report provided to you that, that does include some of that information. Um, it would be my suggestion that since there are other pending items with Chapter Fifteen regarding parking boats, um, that all amendments to Chapter Fifteen be included in one, uh, in one effort. Uh, the other question that I had was what the penalties were for fraudulently using a disabled permit and I include that in the report. I'm available if there's any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder.
Mr. Chairman, um, I'm not sure how you wanna handle it. Um, as long as staff is here, I'd, I'd like to make a motion just to, uh, to direct staff to extend the hours for the, uh, for the disabled, um, uh, under the state statute. Uh, we're clearly allowed to extend them, um, the parking, um, at, you know, at the meters. That, that's your opinion, correct?
Yes.
And, um, I did not see the fiscal impact statement, but I, I can't imagine it's overwhelming.
I do have a, a copy of it if you'd like to see it.
Well, why don't you just tell us what it says briefly?
Um, this is the table and the summary at the bottom.
Like sending free parking by one hour, there's minimum three, fifteen thousand dollars. There's been four additional hours lost. And how do we know that?
Oh, Cia Win, the Department of Legislative and Asset Management Parking Division. Sir, we know this because the total transactions, those are the actual transactions during the physical year, physical year of nineteen. Um, the disabled transactions, they are about, these are actuals. They're about eighteen percent of the total transactions. But so we know that, taking that on actual data, historical actual data. Now, the hours lost at one additional hour and a loss at four additional hours, those are, uh, as, those are purest numbers, uh, based on the fact that we do in fact know that after four hours, the history has been that parkers would move their cars, their, their locations to another location to get the additional four hours of parking, three hours of parking. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, sorta.
Okay, so what is it that you don't understand?
So I, I guess, I guess, and I don't wanna belabor this, Mr. Chairman, but I guess the, if you're saying, if you're saying if I'm disabled and I'm, I'm there for four hours and I know that I'm, I'm about to get a ticket if I stay more than four hours and I gotta go move my car. So then they go move and their, their car to another space and then that starts, so that impacts the same budget. So to me, it's a wash. I mean, I mean, in other words, if they stay in that same space for eight hours as opposed to moving to another space and clicking on disabled or pushing the button for disabled, to me, it's a financial wash.
So the way that it, yeah, so the way that it works now is that, um, as we are today, if they're in a space for four hours, the first four hours are free parking based on the state statutes.
Right.
So if they stay there for an additional hour, that's when they would, we would start charging them for the additional hour because they did not move their vehicles for that, that hour, hour two or three or four, what have you. So if we change the ordinance to say that they're gonna park for, uh, for eight hours, then that's, that, uh, one, the hour revenue that we would be getting, we would not be getting that revenue because now the new statute, the new ordinance says that they can park for four hours for free. The additional four hours for free.
But didn't you just say that anecdotally, we, you believe that they get in their car and move to another free space for additional four hours?
Anecdote, if the space is available, yes. But oftentimes the spaces are not available. And then that's when we would charge the additional one hour.
And what keeps them from just staying in that same space and, and clicking over additional four hours?
Nothing will stop them from doing it. The difference is that whether or not they're gonna be charged for the additional.
No, I don't mean that. I just mean, if they're in that space, how, do we chalk their tires? Do we write down their tag number?
Oh, so we have enforcement to go, to go around and they have to display their placards.
Right.
And if the placards are displayed, we have a way of, our monitoring based on our electronic enforcement technology, uh, as to whether or not they've been there the four hours or the additional, or five hours.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is, is if they're there for four hours and they wait five minutes and they re, they re-click that button for an additional four hours, that's, is that okay?
Not without moving their vehicles, that is not okay.
Well, how do we, that's what I'm saying, how do we enforce that?
We have our enforcement team going through and enforcing and, uh, and we have enforcement staff in different areas throughout the downtown corridor. And that we enforce that by using the technology, the handheld devices. And as they go and they're, they could track based on tag and...
Do they do, do they do that or they can't?
Yes, they do, they can.
Okay.
Yes.
So what's the point? What, I mean, obviously this city wants to enable and encourage ADA folks to be able to park for free. So why the four hours versus the eight hours? We had a gentleman come in front of us in a wheelchair and he said, that's not fair. Okay, I, my tendency is to agree with that. So why, why, why do we not wanna change that and give them eight hours if they need eight hours?
Okay, so to answer your question, why the four and not the eight? The, we decided upon the four years ago because that was a state statute of,
Okay.
That's what we're gonna do. To follow up with the eight hours that we knew that there was some abuse of the system, but we did not realize that that was, um, that much of a, a need until the gentleman came before us that we should, really should be extending it to an additional hours.
So, so you're okay with it?
I am okay, uh, based on the fact that we, yes, I'm okay with it.
Okay, all right.
Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd just move to direct legal staff.
And let's do that if we may at the end, Councilman.
You wanna do it at the end?
Yes, sir, thank you, sir. Councilman Carlson.
First, I'm very in favor of trying to do something to help our disability community, but the, the fiscal issue, um, kind of alarms me. So I wanted to ask a couple clarifying questions and, and we'll have to figure this out. But it looks like if the, um, first of all, the, the numbers that you're using on, um, on the, uh, on, let's take August nineteenth, so that's seventeen thousand dollars. That, that you know is coming specifically from either, uh, the, the parking meter, coins in the parking meters that are at disabled spaces or they're coming from the Park Mobile specifically for disabled. So you know, you know very accurately that that's the money coming from disabled spaces, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and it surprises me that it's so high. Uh, does anybody know what the percentage of population in Tampa is that's disabled?
That's gonna be my question, thank you, Councilman.
Do you, do you have any idea? I mean, this would say fifteen, seventeen, eighteen percent, depending on the month.
So, yeah, I don't know the percentage of disabled populations, but these are the, yeah, the number of, of, um, transactions. And, um, we have to consider that we do have special events and things like that. So we do see a lot more of activity of, of disabled parkers during those times since we're increasing our special events in downtown and in New York.
Um, just the last thing is the number, um, I was thinking like Councilman Dingfelder that the number would be not very big, uh, but at three-hundred-thousand dollars an hour, it's a huge number compared to the budget. I guess in, in your motion you'll make later, we need to figure out, um, from the mayor and the chief of staff where the money's gonna come from because it's a, it's a lot larger than I thought. But I'm, I'm in favor of it in principle, I just wanna figure out where the money's coming from if we're gonna do it.
So if I may, so this is revenue loss, this is revenue we're not taking yet.
Which just means we'll have to cut three-hundred thousand or one point two million from the budget.
Uh, Councilman Miranda, then Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, along with the same thing that, uh, my colleague just spoke of, the financial impact of, uh, three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. Before I vote on anything, I wanna know how we're gonna subsidize parking department with that figure or if it's four hours, it's a million-two, or if it's eight hours, it's double a million-two or two-point-four, a million dollars a year. And before I do anything, I wanna know the financial impact because that department was in the red for many, many years because of different things that were done. A, the selling of the parking garage at Tampa General is one of the biggest. And, uh, the different losses from six o'clock evening on, to certain areas of downtown, the parking goes somewhere else. It disappears into others. So we have to make something, I don't think the general fund should continue subsidizing of this department when they're in the red forever. It, it did it for a while and I think right now you're about teetering at breakeven or just over. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
And, and so I don't want that to go and then somebody else is paying for somebody else's usage. I understand and I have, I have all my heart and sympathy for those who are handicapped. However, there's a, how much we can do and how much we can't do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Councilman Dingfelder.
Well, we could continue this discussion. I also think that the mayor has a disability committee. Um, and I'm wondering, uh, have we run this by the, the disability committee yet for their input?
Well, yes, sir, what we, what, what has been discussed with, um, the ADA coordinated with the city and, and with the committee through, through her, with the committee is the actual, um, the extended, the extension of the, I, of the hours and the fraud that's associated with the placards. The financial piece has not been discussed.
Okay. And did the committee vote on this or, or speak to it at all?
We spoke to, yes, and I spoke to that, uh, point during the last presentation. And, uh, they were in fact in agreement, they were more concerned with the abuse, the abuse of the dis, of the placards, uh, more so than extending the hours.
Well, and I think as we've discussed other times, that fraud issue is, is, I think, beyond council ability, uh, to, to address. I don't know who, who would address that, TPD or some other agencies that, that actually give out these placards, that sort of thing. The other thing I wanted, two things I wanted to mention. Number one, on the, on the dollar amount, again, this is worst-case scenario. This is every single person who's parking there would continue to park there for an additional four hours. Okay? So that's worst case, that's absolute worst-case scenario. What, what my potential motion says is, is to give the people the ability to park up to eight hours. Because otherwise, what are we telling them? Okay, that they gotta roll out there or limp out or whatever means they have to get out there to renew for an additional four hours and that's just not fair. I think most people who come downtown are not gonna stay for more than four hours. So again, I don't want us to be totally persuaded by this, this very intimidating one-point-two-million dollars because, yeah, that's alarming to me as well. But I think that is, is total worst-case scenario. Anyway, okay.
Uh, Councilman Carlson.
To that point, I wonder, I wonder what, and not to go too bit deep in the weeds, but I wonder what model you all use. Did you, it, Park Mobile, I think, has a lot of data, so you probably have more information there than you would on, on the, the coins in the meter box. But on Park Mobile, for example, can you, I, I assume that they're able to plug in the first four hours for free and then you can, so you could tell, can you tell in the app that somebody stayed there four hours and then they added the additional? Or is, is this whole number based on a model where you all are projecting, using some kind of statistical model to, to decide, uh, to estimate how many people would stay?
Okay, so, yes, sir, so, no, the, the data that we're providing is actual, is not Park Mobile. So in order for someone who's, um, uh, disabled to access the four free hours, they have to activate the pay station. We get the information from the actual pay station and, uh, that's how we're able to get and know how many people, how many transactions have occurred.
The data in the pay station specifically says they stayed four hours free. And then, and then you can see of the people who stayed four hours for free, how many hours they stayed after that and, right?
Right, so, yeah, it doesn't say four hours free, they, uh, act, they activate the pay station and it says, it gives you the, it asks you if you're disabled or handicapped in which space. So it doesn't say the four hours are free, but we're able to access that, get that information. And that's how we're able to determine if someone parks longer than the four hours, an additional hour, two hour, if, in that one space. Because that information connects to our technology devices.
But the, and sorry, I just have to ask one more time. The, the predictive model that you use to try to figure out how many people you think would stay, um, is that based on actual data where you know already that people stayed four hours in, in addition? Or it sounds like it might not be connected in the data sets.
The, the predictive model is just that, the one hour, the additional four hours, that's the predicted numbers if everyone stayed in those spaces. And yes, that information's taken from the real-time numbers. If I'm asking the question, if I'm answering the question.
Like my colleague said, it might be, it, the, the model is a prediction, but it could, the number could be less.
Okay, thank you guys very much, we appreciate it, thank you. Okay, next we move onward to item number sixty-two, I believe that's Ms. Selman.
Good morning, counsel. Um, once again, I gave you a lot more information in writing than you probably wanted. But you had asked in your motion about the county's underground utilities program and whether the city could adopt a similar program. So again, we provided you with a rather lengthy memo and also a copy of the county's procedures manual, program and procedures manual, so you can better understand that. And as you can see, it's a, it's a rather involved process, so I'll just try to explain some of the highlights. And I did discuss this project at length with the, um, county attorney who was primarily responsible for drafting the county ordinance at the time. Um, their ordinance was drafted as a result of a very concerted effort by a particular neighborhood association out in Dana Shores that wanted their utilities undergrounded. And because the county realized early on of the significant cost that would be involved in not just implementing such a program, but even studying... in not just implementing such a program, but even studying the feasibility of undergrounding an entire neighborhood's utilities, the county's ordinance imposes several levels of thresholds to make sure that at each step of the process, there's actual buy-in and commitment from the neighborhood to go forward. So for example, at the outset, only an organized neighborhood association can even apply to be part of the program. They wanted to, you know, make sure that there was a certain amount of critical mass behind the application. In the next step, the county staff and their consultants work with TECO to come up with what they call a rough ballpark estimate of what it would cost to underground utilities in a particular neighborhood. And let me back up, they also have TECO at the outset determine whether it's even an eligible neighborhood, whether it's even feasible. Once the county has that rough ballpark estimate of cost, there's a balloting process where every affected property owner receives a ballot, and unless 67 percent of the ballots vote in favor of moving forward, the process stops at that point. Then the county does a much more involved feasibility study, again with TECO. And let me interrupt for a moment, I do have Alan Denham of TECO here today also to answer questions that I can't answer about this program. But the next step is, they, after they get that 67 percent vote from the affected property owners, they do a feasibility study, a much more involved feasibility study, to come up with a much more realistic estimated cost of undergrounding the utilities. And at that point, there's another round of balloting, and unless 75 percent of the affected property owners vote to move forward, the project stops. And at that point, it's my understanding, the county estimates they would have spent at least 300,000 to do that study, and if they don't get the 75 percent vote, then the county is out that cost. So I just want to make everyone aware that there are costs associated with this. Now again, in the county, so far, only one neighborhood association has taken advantage of this program, but it was, they have successfully moved forward, they got the votes. And in that case, the assessment amounts vary pursuant to the size of the property, but based on the information the county provided to me, the average annual assessment that the property owners in that area will be paying is about $673 a year over a period of 20 years. The entire undergrounding project, again, in that particular Dana Shores neighborhood, is estimated to be at about 2.4 million dollars. So again, our recommendation is, should the city want to adopt a similar program, you can direct staff to do so. We would coordinate with TECO and come back to you with a proposed program. I do want to add one note that isn't in my report. A couple of people in the past few days have mentioned to me, there was a Florida statute adopted in the last session, the Storm Protection Cost Recovery Act, that talked about requiring all the investor-owned utilities in the state, which would include TECO, to come up with a 10-year plan for hardening their utilities to make them safer in a storm. And one of the things that that act talks about is undergrounding utilities. In fact, today, at the Public Service Commission, they're having a rule adoption hearing on this program. But I have spoken with TECO, and I did do my own research, and I think the press, some of the press articles about this program have been a little misleading, suggesting that this would result in any kind of quick undergrounding of utilities in the state of Florida. It's really requiring the utilities to come up with a 10-year plan, and a lot of studying has to be done. And I did confirm with Mr. Denham of TECO that it's fair to say that nothing in that statute is going to lead to any quick undergrounding of utilities in Tampa. So should the city want to move forward with a program like Hillsborough's, that wouldn't, that hasn't been superseded now by the state statute. So happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Carlson and Councilman Dinkfelder.
Isn't it possible for the county just to amend their ordinance to allow this to happen within the city limits?
I did actually discuss that question with the county attorney's office. At the time that the county adopted their program, they made the very express decision to not include the cities. The program is really designed to be a neighborhood-by-neighborhood program, and frankly, the county staff and the county board, they're, they're not used to dealing with, they're not familiar with the city neighborhoods as you are and as our staff is. In addition, it would be, it's a, it's a pretty significantly costly endeavor, and even if the county were to be amenable to that, we'd have to enter into some inter-local agreement with regard to the sharing of costs, if, if they were amenable. But at the, what they explained to me was that at the time they adopted it, they made the express decision not to include the municipalities, to only have it applied to unincorporated Hillsborough County, because again, that's, that's the people their staff regularly deals with. Our staff, our council regularly deals with the neighborhoods in Tampa, is more familiar with the neighborhoods in Tampa.
All right, Councilman Dinkfelder, any other questions?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Selman, for your comprehensive report. The, 10 years ago, when I represented South Tampa, specifically Davis Islanders, were coming to us, coming to me as the District Four representative, and specifically requesting that, you know, we allow them self-determination to, you know, to start this undergrounding effort. And we have nothing in place to assist that. I don't know, you know, how Davis Island would feel about that at this point, or other neighborhoods that might be interested, but I know as these storms get stronger, and we see areas like up in the Panhandle and of course the Bahamas get devastated, and their electric grid gets wiped out, because it's all above ground, the interest might increase. The cost issue is obviously is, you know, significant, however, there hasn't been a huge, you know, storming of the Bastille in terms of the county's program. The county's program's been in place, I'm sure, at least five years, and they've had one neighborhood go forward with it, so it cost the county a couple hundred thousand dollars to help with that one neighborhood, which I think the county will get reimbursed ultimately now that it got approved.
Correct.
So, you know, with that said, I think that resiliency is a huge issue for our, for our city. And frankly, the city being the part that's right on the bay might be even more vulnerable than the county, or than many parts of the county. So, I'm going to add it to my list of motions, but, but I intend to, to make a motion at the end of the meeting to, to move forward with the similar ordinance. Passing the ordinance doesn't cost us a penny. And then if the neighborhoods come forward in a serious way, then we can figure out those budget issues down the road. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Okay, next we move to items 63 and 64, which you can take together. I initiated those. I don't, and I see Ms. Coyle here, if you wish to come forward, you may, but I don't really need to have any questions. I just wanted to briefly just talk about this, which is that we had passed, as y'all remember, an ordinance that, or land use development with, I believe it was a car rental facility, which I found out was pretty darn near the Jackson House, so there's two things that come out of this. Number one, you'll see in the memorandum here, let me find this here, that from here on out, planning staff will include any landmark structure on the aerial map that is produced for rezoning, special use, alcohol development and review petition nearby. So the planners will also include a new section in these reports entitled, "Landmark Structures Within 1,000 Feet of Subject Property," under which each landmark structure will be listed with pertinent details. Because, you know, for us here in this city, historical preservation is a very big deal, and I think that if we're dealing with a rezoning, if we're dealing with any kind of a land use development deal or issue, that we ought to have this information with us. And I think that this potentially could have been an example of information that we either should have sought or had. Again, I want to make clear, I'm not pointing the finger at anybody at the city that buck stops with us, 110 percent, that's my position at least. And then there's a report over here on this development in the Jackson House, and we'll be, I'll be following up with the Jackson House on this, just to make sure there's no adverse effect. From what I'm told here, it appears that there's not. So this is just something that we wanted to check up on. Any comments from council members? Yes, sir.
Well, just, just so the public's clear, when we did that rezoning, the Jackson House issue came up. So it wasn't that we were ignorant about the fact that Jackson House was next door. I think we recognized it was a slight distance away from the actual project itself and would have, I think we intuitively concluded it wouldn't have any negative impact, and that's why we voted in favor of that. Mr. Chairman, I also wanted to point out, item 60 needs to be addressed before we move forward too far.
60?
Unless we already did it. The continu-
Oh, you know what? I, I, oh no, that's, that's going to be continued.
But don't we need a motion to continue?
Yeah, and we'll do that, I'll do that, thank you very much. Yeah, but I just wanted to move forward with this, just so that we explicitly have that before our eyes, because I think that's pertinent information, it goes without saying, so. Yes, sir.
Sorry, I know, I think it's a great idea, thank you for putting that forward.
Thank you, Councilman Carlson, appreciate it, sir. Okay, and since Councilman Dinkfelder, you brought that up, let's may have a continuance for item number 60.
December 5th.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Mansky.
For December 5th, 2019, at the State Department Court.
Okay, and a second, I think it was, by Councilman Goode's, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, next we move onward to item 65.
Morning, Council, I did, Tom Stelling, Planning and Development, I did provide the most recent draft of the information that will work on sustainability and generally green. And Councilman Dinkfelder, you'll remember, because you had craft resolution back in the day, about how that was to be reported on an annual basis. The items that I sent before you have taken on quite a different look than several of the previous annual reports. And we've also expanded, the one thing I did want to touch on is that we included the social equity part of this. And that's, you know, often talked about as the third leg of the sustainability stool. And it, it wasn't in any of the earlier, the earlier reports. The social equity report really didn't start to show up until about a year ago. I branched out and I included it. So a lot of the policies, programs, and items that the city has been working on for a while, as well as some of the ones that have taken place over the last year, have been included in that. The other significant part of the overall bit of a change in the reporting process is that we started to take a look at the various programs and policies that the city has as it reflected our original 2012 greenhouse gas emission study. And those items show how the city is addressing some of those specific recommendations that came from that study. The other part of the motion was talking about, you know, where do we go from here? And what are we doing, you know, what have we done lately for me, kind of thing? And, and in my response, I said that, you know, it's a significant part of the mayor's five strategic areas. They were just, you know, it was starting to come up again in executive staff meetings. And the sustainability coordinator, resiliency coordinator, or officer, will, you know, will take the lead and coordinate the efforts going forward. Currently, we are working on with the Regional Planning Council, their resiliency coalition, to become part of the overall, that coalition as it applies to the entire bay, because Steely Delarice doesn't really recognize municipal boundary lines, you know, so the, it was decided by that coalition that myself and Randy Gores have been working on, are working with, CJ Reynolds, some of you may know her, she's over at the Regional Planning Council, she was brought in specifically to do that. We also have, Mr. Gores is working with our staff and updating our local mitigation strategy that talks about, you know, how we recover and what kinds of things, you know, we're going to do to mitigate impacts in general. But all of that will be rolled in, everything that I've given you, the resiliency coalition work that we've been doing, and also the stormwater department was working with us on that, as well as the local mitigation strategy, and any other kinds of infrastructural improvement will all be rolled into one, one plan which will affect virtually every city department. And I'll answer any questions if you have some.
Any questions? Councilman Dinkfelder.
Mr. Stelling, thank you, and it's very informative documents here that I would assume are also on the city's website.
Yes, sir.
In, in, in that fashion. The, when we first took this on, who knows, '05, '06, something like that?
'08.
'08, okay.
Yes, sir.
The, I was very excited about it, and I'm excited to see the city's made a lot of strides in regard to green operations and green, green spaces and, and green buildings. Were we ever able to identify quantitatively our greenhouse emissions at a certain point as a benchmark and know 2008, know where we are 11 years later in regard to improving that? Obviously, we can't control specifically, you know, what the rest of the population does out there in the city, but in terms of the city operations and that sort of thing, what, you know, was that part of what we've done over the last 11 years?
In 2012, excuse me, in 2012, we did undertake, that's when we got a Energy Efficiency Conservation Block grant, we got a chunk of that money, and then Mayor Iorio carved out a pile of money to do this study, the greenhouse gas emission study. So it was a snapshot of what was going on in 2011 using that data. It probably needs, I think what I've given you and how I've taken those recommendations and plugged them into city oper, the city operations implementing those recommendations, will anecdotally say, yeah, our greenhouse gas is going down, but I believe that that needs to, like you say, you know, you know, stick a pin in it, take another snapshot, it would now be eight years later, and then see where it is now, because that will dictate some other kinds of programs you may want to do going forward. And I, the mayor is very well in tune with that.
So, do we have the funding to do that, or is that another grant we need to look, look into?
Well, I, I always recommend looking into grants.
Obviously, I think you want to, we have a good benchmark, that's great, but obviously we need to keep that going every couple of years to see how, you know, if these changes are actually making a difference. And one thing I'm not seeing on here are vehicles, and I had pushed a long time ago for more hybrids and electric, electric vehicles, and I haven't seen that in our fleet, and that sort of bothers me a little bit. Not only in terms of the strides that we can make, but also in terms of the example that we can set out in the community. Two questions there. One is money to do it?
Well, the money to do it, if the mayor, I mean, she made a strong commitment to do a resiliency plan, and, you know, that's part of one of her strategic goals, and it's listed in the budget, so I'm going to say, yes, having that plan and going forward with that plan is contemplated in a, for a funding source. The other part of it, like I said, is like, I'm always in favor of searching for additional grants, because anytime we can mitigate our funding sources to stretch our dollar is a good thing. And there are grants out there that we could probably take advantage of. We are working with one grant, or with the resiliency coalition over in Tampa Bay Planning Commission, Tampa Bay Regional Planning Commission. We're going to partner up with them as part of a grant which will help do another assessment, so we are going to do that. There's no money to pay for that, but if we can become part of that grant, all we have to do is we're just matching with some in-kind services, it's not costing us anything. But again, it validates our data, it helps give us some metrics, it helps, helps us understand where, where we can be more effective in the kinds of things that we do. And it also relates to making sure that whatever we're doing with affordable housing and disenfranchised areas, that's also part of that grant, to assess the best places to put housing opportunities as well. So it's kind of a combination, it's a pretty special, unique grant. What was the other question?
Fleet.
Fleet. Fleet, unfortunately, you're, you're correct, we haven't, it was, we haven't, you know, gone out and just done any kind of ongoing thing. I would have to check with OSEA, because she is the person that's in charge of fleet. I believe, you know, we have made great strides in, you know, compressed natural gas vehicles for the solid waste pickup, but then there's a whole conversation about where compressed natural gas comes from, which I really don't want to touch right now. And, but- And, but I think I can, I can, you know, check back with OSEA, and I can shoot council memo and say, here's where we are in that number. I can do that in a pretty easy report.
Maybe send us a memo from her, from you, or whatever, on what our plans are for fleet, if any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Councilman Miranda.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you for being here, sir. You know, I look back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and seven, two thousand, makes no difference what year it is. Could be two thousand twenty-three in the future. But it's not what you talk about, it's what you do. And I'm not talking about you specifically, anyone. When you speak about water uses, you can change your lifestyle and don't plant water, grass. It takes a lot of water. Plant rocks, they don't take any water. When you talk about your fleet, some of our fleet are hybrids. I've seen them. But what do we have in the future program? So every budget, you can say you're doing something, and I'm not speaking about you again. It's about the whole, the whole system. How many electric cars we're going to buy? The only way you lead is by example. You do not lead about talking about an example, because they'll never become a reality. And I'm not talking about myself, but if you look outside, you see an all-electric car. If you go to the house, you don't see any grass. You see another car, it's a hybrid. Got to have enough money to buy two electric cars. Well, let me put it this way. I didn't want to go in debt to buy two electric cars. So what I'm saying is, if the city of Tampa elected or not elected employees of the city, create some, a club or something. Everybody wants a club. Everybody wants a slogan. I don't want none of that. I want reality to be done. Whether it's caused by nature, whether it's caused by the sex abuse of us humans on earth, it's caused by something, and I'm not here on either side of the issue. The earth is warming. There was one hundred of those big glaciers up in Alaska. There's only twenty-five left. The Amazon forest, when it burned, it took twenty percent of the oxygen of the world's oxygen supply. But it goes in one ear and out the other. We're facing our own future and which way we're going to live. You can't continue to build houses the way they are now. When you build a house and it's got the eaves on the outside, guess what happens when a hurricane comes or a high wind comes? First thing to go out is the roof. Once the roof goes, everything can go, because it's compression. I like to see houses built where there are no eaves. They got a little rounding away, and the windows are not just square. They're rounded in the window so that the wind can't pick up anything. But I'm just a city council member. I'm not an architect, and I don't want to be an architect, because I ain't got enough years to learn how to be an architect. And if I did, I couldn't make a living as an architect.
I'd burn your house, Charlie.
The rhetoric that I'm saying is, don't tell me what you want done. Show me by example, and then maybe we can get it done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Councilman Citro.
Very quickly, myself and other councilmen here, we're at League of Cities up in Orlando, and we saw a presentation by the city of Orlando and how they've become green. I would like to not be Orlando, but however, learn from what they have done. First of all, fleet, not emergency vehicles. I would like to go see them become electrical. The cost is outrageous. However, putting solar panels on all municipal buildings so that we could recharge our cars might offset the cost. Grants, why aren't we fighting more for grants? I would like to see facts and figures of, of the money spent today, what it's going to save us ten years from now, five years from now, twenty years from now, and how we can advance ourselves and make a, a, a promise to the citizens of Tampa that we'll be green in the next twenty years, so that we can say, we're Tampa. We've learned from other cities. This is what we're doing. Please and thank you.
Okay. I believe our mayor has made that exact statement, to be, you know, to be totally renewable.
Can, can I see facts and figures? Showing us the pros and cons. If, if, if we spend this money now, how much is it going to save us ten years from now? Twenty years from now? Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Thank you. Anyone? Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate it. Okay, are there any requests by the public for reconsideration of legislative matters? There apparently being none. We move forward to committee reports. Councilman Citro, public safety.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move, agenda items number five through eighteen.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman, was it Maniscalco?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Committee, Councilman Goode's.
Mr. Chairman, I move items nineteen and twenty.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder, items twenty-one through thirty-one, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will move items twenty-one through thirty-one with a substitute resolution on item twenty-three.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Miranda, finance.
Chairman, I move items thirty-two through thirty-six.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I wanted to point out, if I may, that I believe item thirty-three there is for those East Tampa funds we-
Yes, sir. The budget being adjusted, we didn't get what we agreed on bottom of the budget.
Yep, so just to let you all know.
All the budget amendments, yeah.
Yep. Councilman Carlson? Yes, sir.
On regard to item thirty-six, thirty-six, which is a report from the Ethics Commission?
Yes.
And it was received and filed, but had a chat with Chief Staff Bennett in regard to ethics training, and I just stressed to him the importance that not only are the city, regular city employees trained on ethics, but that our staff, you know, be, be included in that training, because we obviously have a lot of potential ethics issues that are, you know, that our staff will need to be caught up to speed on, or stay up to speed on. Mr. Shelby is going to give us additional ethics training, I guess, over the next month or two.
Next.
Next week? There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. And Councilman Carlson, and I believe you also wanted to comment on an item, sir.
Yeah, I know. Item number forty-two is about a contract with a consulting firm related to the Economic Development Committee. And I've been saying over and over again, like a broken record, that we need to focus on economic development, not just real estate development. This consulting project is partly, or mostly about, about relooking at the, the real estate processes. And I've spoken to Chief of Staff and, and Ms. Post and others who are involved in it. And, and as they're looking at the whole department, they're, they're trying to fix everything. You know, one of the things that held the city back in the last few years is that the permitting was not appropriate or fast enough. We maybe, we, we celebrate the successes of downtown. We might have had twice as much in downtown had the permitting process worked. So it's essential, but the staff assure me that we're going to, after this is done, or simultaneously, we're going to come back and look at economic development overall. So with that said, I would like to move items number thirty-seven through forty-seven.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman-
Mr. Chair.
Forty-six. Thirty-seven through forty-six. I believe a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
And does that include the substitution of exhibit A on forty-two?
It does now. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Councilman Maniscalco.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I move item number, item number forty-seven.
We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, may I have a motion for item forty-eight to be scheduled?
Move to, go ahead. Move to schedule this hearing for November twenty-first, twenty nineteen, at ten thirty a.m.
Do we have a second? We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we move to our quasi-judicial proceedings. I don't, since these are second readings, I don't believe we need to have a motion to open.
Move item forty-nine, we can go if you want.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, if anybody is here to speak or testify today, please stand up. If you're able to do so, raise your right hand and prepare to be sworn in.
Do you sound to swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Good morning, City Council. Mary Saminiego, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. Items forty-nine through fifty-five on your agenda are all second readings for either rezoning applications or special use two applications. All required changes, aside plans have been completed under the city clerk's office. I believe all our applicants are here except for one, which I will speak to later, and we're ready to proceed. Thank you.
Okay, forty-nine.
Good morning. My name is Perry Sullivan, and I'm here to speak on College Hill Project, the church. Essentially, the long and short of it is, we had a set bike issue from a tree, and that was, I think, fifty-six feet. Getting deep into the project, we were able to cut that, this fifty-six feet down to twenty feet. So here we are now, going to rezonate again to get this revised. Okay. Pretty much what we're doing.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Thank you very much, sir. Is anyone, any, nothing else? Just making sure. Anyone here from the public here to speak on item number forty-nine? If so, come forward.
Second.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Dingfelder, can you, sir, take item forty-nine?
Sure. I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. This is regarded to REZ nineteen dash forty-seven. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of thirty-eight fourteen, thirty-eight thirty-one and thirty-nine fourteen north, twenty-ninth street, twenty-six thirty-one east, thirty-second avenue, twenty-six sixteen, twenty-six eighteen, twenty-six twenty-one, twenty-nine oh-one, twenty-nine oh-two east thirty-third avenue, twenty-six thirteen, twenty-nine oh-two, twenty-nine oh-nine, twenty-nine eleven, twenty-nine thirteen, twenty-nine fifteen, twenty-nine seventeen, and twenty-nine nineteen Lindell Avenue, and twenty-nine fifteen east Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classifications, PD Plan Development, Place of Religious Assembly, to PD Plan Development, Place of Religious Assembly, providing an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Goode's. This is second reading, but I believe our system is down, so we have to roll call.
I get extra credit for the length of that one.
Yeah, I know.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Maniscalco? Viera?
Yes.
Citro?
Aye.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried with Goode, or Maniscalco being absent.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next we move to item number fifty. Yes, sir. Anyone here for fifty?
Mary Saminiego, for the record, I do not see the applicant present. However, I ask that you proceed with the hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody here for public comment on item number fifty? If so, please come forward.
Move to close.
Second. We have a motion to close by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Miranda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Goode's, can you, sir, take item number fifty, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. File number REZ nineteen dash seventy. Ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of thirty fifteen West Columbus Drive in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one, from zoning district classification, PD Plan Development Medical Office, Professional Business Office, to PD Plan Development Bank, the drive-in providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Goode, a second by Councilman Dingfelder. Roll call, please.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Citro?
Aye.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we move onward to item fifty-one. If anyone is here for that.
Good morning, Chairman and Council. Michael Horner, excuse me, fourteen five oh-two North Dalemyrie Highway, Tampa, representing the applicant, the owner. With no objections, the community support. Here to answer any questions.
Any questions for the, no. Thank you, sir. Is anyone here for public comment on item number fifty-one? If so, please come forward.
Move to close.
Second.
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda. We have a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Maniscalco, do you mind, sir, taking item number fifty-one?
Yes, sir. I have, I think, Mr. Chairman, I have a substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of thirteen eighteen West Lineball Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS fifty residential single family to C and commercial neighborhood providing an effective date.
We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda. All, please, roll.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Citro?
Aye.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we move to item fifty-two.
Chairman, again, Michael Horner, fourteen five oh-two North Dalemyrie Highway, Tampa, representing the applicant, here to answer any questions. We have all support. Thank you.
Any questions on this? Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone here from the public here to comment on item number fifty-two?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion to close by second, by Councilman Miranda, seconded by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilman Citro, can you, sir, take item fifty-two?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of three thousand and eight West Julia Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS sixty. I'm, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself. Again, a substitute ordinance being represented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of twenty-one oh-two West Waters Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification CG Commercial General to RS fifty residential single family CI Commercial Intencer, providing an effective date. Again, the petitioner has burden of proof, and it is consistent with comprehensive plan.
We have a motion by Councilman Citro, a second by Councilman Miranda. Roll call, please.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Viera?
Yes.
Citro?
Aye.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson? Motion carried unanimously.
That's awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Chinese pills, right there.
That is too funny. Next, and for those who didn't hear, Councilman Carlson said the yes, a C, which is, that's great. That's why we're laughing. Fifty-three, if anyone's here for fifty-three.
Good morning, Council. I'm the representative for this petition. Be happy to answer any questions you might have. We're respectfully requesting your approval.
Thank you, sir. Anyone, or strike that, any questions for fifty, on fifty-three? Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Anyone here for public comment on item number fifty-three? If so, please come forward.
Move to close.
Motion to close by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, Councilman Miranda, if you, sir, don't mind taking fifty-three.
Move file number fifty-three, file number REZ nineteen dash ninety, substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of three thousand and eight West Julia Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section One, from zoning district classification RS sixty residential single family to RM eighteen residential mall family providing an effective date.
Second. We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Council.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Vieira?
Yes.
Siro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so much. Next, fifty-four, is anyone here for fifty-four?
Mary Samiago, Planning, Design and Development Coordination, the applicant for item number fifty-four informed me that he is out of town, so I ask that you proceed with the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is anyone here to publicly comment on fifty-four? If so, please come forward.
Second.
Motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Senior Carlson, if you could take item fifty-two, please.
Move a substantive, substitute ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of three zero one five West Saint Nicholas Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in Section One, from zoning district classification CG commercial general to RS fifty residential single family providing effective date.
Second. Motion by Councilman Carlson, a second by Councilman Miranda, roll call.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yes.
Vieira?
Yes.
Siro?
Yes.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, fifty-five.
Good morning, Councilman. I am Anna Norfields. I am here for my second reading in regards to the daycare center that I am proposing zoning for.
Go ahead. Any questions? No? All right. Do we have anyone from the public that wishes to speak on item number fifty-five?
Move to close.
We have a motion to close from Councilman Miranda, with a second from Councilman Goode's, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. We go back to Councilmember Dingfelder, if you would take fifty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regard to file number SU two dash nineteen dash oh five, I move an ordinance presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance approving a special use permit S two approving a daycare in an RS sixty residential single family zoning district in the general vicinity of one zero seven zero one north Fourteenth Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and as more particularly described in Section One, provide an effective date.
All right. Do we have a second? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, is this the one that?
Typo.
The typo?
Yes, should be fifteenth street.
So, the correct, the correct address, Councilmember, is one zero seven zero one north Fifteenth Street, just so.
And I will amend my motion to include the typo correction, one zero seven zero one north Fifteenth Street, not Fourteenth Street.
Okay, we have a motion, a corrected amended motion from Councilman Dingfelder, a second from Councilman Goode's, roll call, please.
Dingfelder?
Before I do, I, I take it that the actual document is correct?
Yes.
Okay. Aye.
Goode's?
Aye.
Vieira?
Aye.
Siro?
Aye.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried with Vieira being absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we move on to item number fifty-six, our.
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Coordination, staff has no problems with this vacating. My applicant cannot be here today due to work, she's not able to take off, so I said I would stand in for her, so.
Okay, are there any questions from Councilmembers?
Move to close.
Wait, anyone from the public wishes to speak on item number fifty-six?
Now I move to close.
Councilmember Dingfelder with a motion to close, and second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes that portion. We go on to item.
We need to read it.
Oh.
Fifty-six.
Councilmember Goode's.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. File VHC nineteen dash nineteen, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption. An ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing and abandoning a certain portion of an alleyway, right-of-way lying south of Twenty-ninth Avenue, north of Twenty-eighth Avenue, east of Thirty-four Street and west of Thirty-four Street in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida. The same being more than fully described in Section One, here subject to certain easement, reservation, convenience, conditions and restrictions more particularly set for here providing an effective date.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Goode, second from Councilmember Miranda, roll call.
Dingfelder?
Yes.
Goode's?
Yes.
Maniscalco?
Yep.
Vieira?
Yes.
Siro?
Aye.
Miranda?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. I apologize, I had to run outside, I got a call from my son's school telling me that he was absent, which was quite a surprise, because I dropped him off this morning. Just, I was just making sure. Okay, well, next we'll move to our public hearing, number fifty-seven. Anyone's here for that?
So, should we call the truant officer?
I made sure he was there. That's, I know that number.
Good morning, Kate Wells, Office of the City Attorney. On item fifty-seven, I submitted a resolution asking that you resend the public hearing for today. The applicant was unable to comply with the notice requirements for today, and rather than rescheduling it for a date in the future, will come back to counsel with a resolution setting the hearings when they're ready to move forward.
Move to strike.
Can I just move, just move the resolution, please? That would, that would suffice, is that correct?
Please.
Move the resolution.
That's what I was instructed to do by the clerk's office, so.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder to move the resolution, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Okay, next we move to item fifty-eight.
Good morning, for the record, Kate Wells, Office of the City Attorney. This item is a review hearing based upon a zoning administrator's determination. I have provided you with an outline of the hearing procedures for today, as well as the standard of review and proposed sample motions, and these have been provided to the petitioner's counsel as well. As you will see, the standard of review for today is de novo, meaning that you can take new testimony, you can enter in new evidence, and then make a decision as if you're standing in the shoes of the zoning administrator. And then the applicable code criteria will be found in Section twenty-seven dash sixty, subsection E five. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Melanie Callaway, Transportation Planning. I reviewed this property and at twenty-one eleven West Watchers and denied their access to the alley as they were requesting. I'll show you a requesting. They're requesting to have a driveway apron accessing a ten-foot alley with a two-point four-foot setback. Originally, how this started was, is they were putting in a driveway apron without a permit. They were cited, and they came in for a design exception to allow the garage access to the rear. They already have an existing driveway to Watchers currently consisting. So, a little history on this project, I've been at the city for a while. So, in two thousand and four, there was an existing structure there for a very long time, and they decided in two thousand and four they wanted to make a second story. And I reviewed that project in two thousand and four when I was a B engineer, too, and I had objected to their access to the alley. And I objected due to site visibility, and it's not far enough for the vehicle to actually make turns. I'll go into that in a minute. ARC did not approve access to the alley. There is their motions with setbacks, but never approved the access to an alley, they did not ask for a waiver at that time to access the alley. After that hearing, Del Acosta and Ron Villa did not ask my opinion, and approved by staff was garage doors to access the rear. I'd spoken to them, and their reason for doing that was that so the homeowner could take materials in and out of their garage from the alley, not necessarily to park in it. They were never approved to have a driveway apron accessing the alley. This is their rear elevation, that is their elevation towards Watchers, they do actually have access to Watchers. So, let me explain. This vehicle here is for an average passenger vehicle at fifteen and a half feet long. A fifteen and a half foot long vehicle is probably about a BMW three series. My Toyota Camry does not fit in that, it is actually fifteen point nine one, it's longer. There's actually larger vehicles, Councilman Dingfelder's truck would probably be exceeding that as well. So, there's two reasons why this is not viable to have a twelve-foot area for a vehicle to maneuver. Number one is a vehicle at this size, fifteen and a half feet, needs a nineteen point two feet to be able to make that maneuver. The second issue is a public safety issue. This is two for reasons of you can't make that turn, but the second is a public safety issue. The vehicle, front end of the vehicle, he cannot see if he is pulling out or backing up into an alley, he can't see. Site visibility is blocked for the first six feet. This is a ten-foot alley, used by the solid waste vehicle, used by the recycling solid waste vehicle, there's vehicles up and down every day, there's people on bicycles, there's peoples on scooters. That's, it's a public safety issue because you can't see either pulling out or backing out into the alley. That was the main reason why I had objected. This plan right here was the one they submitted to BLD sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, there was no driveway access to the alley. This is the plan that they submitted, ARC in nineteen, nineteen, in two thousand and nineteen, and no access to the alley, they're requesting fencing. This is directly east of the property, brand new structure. Their accessory structure is at fourteen feet, they have vehicular access because that does meet code. We're not going to bore you, the petitioner put in a whole bunch of other instances all around in the South Howard, South Tampa area, which ARC had granted variances to backouts for garages entrances. There was not one that was ever approved at twelve point four feet, it was always greater. There was one instance at eighty-nine, eighteen nineteen Watchers, where it says they allowed that to occur at thirty-two inches. I pulled the building permit, I objected, I'm very consistent, and I actually have all my memos, if you have questions on those, I'm very consistent about objecting to these instances for public safety. I pulled the building permit, this is the building permit, you see it, it has the seal right here, this is the property, I had to blow it up for you. And you could see here, it was built at fourteen point two inches. They never built, they had enough, they had fourteen feet, they didn't go exactly thirty-two inches, but they did at fourteen two. This is not the twelve point four as this petitioner is requesting. That's why I had denied their request.
Any questions? Councilman Dingfelder?
Question. Ms. Shelby, first, from an ethical perspective, Ms. Callaway and I are both Virginia Tech Hokies, you know, so I might have an unfair, you know, opportunity to support her. No, I'm just kidding.
I hope that's the case.
Yeah.
For the purposes of the record.
But I'm also a Gator, too, for the Gator Nation out there. Ms. Callaway, in all seriousness, do you have any photographs that we can have a better representation of what we're really talking about?
I do not have photographs, but maybe the petitioner has any, you can ask him some questions. I'll be here.
In regard, in regard to this strange thing now, that he could build, or has built, or could build garage doors to the alley, he, he, he can't, unless we give him permission, or you give him permission, build the, the apron, the concrete apron to get there. But arguably, couldn't he just leave it dirt and go in and out of there without anybody's permission?
It's not by code, because he was never granted that access.
I understand that, but realistically, from a, from a realistic perspective, he just put, if he put dirt or gravel on his own yard, came out of his garage, garage to the rear, and just did that, I don't, I mean, is a cop going to stand there and cite him? I don't under.
The problem.
I mean, I mean, it's sort of, it is a little bit of a weird situation, because you're saying the ARC and, and, and those folks somehow gave him permission to build these doors, so now he's got doors, he's got potential vehicle inside, he's got an alley that's immediately abutting his, his own property, so.
Okay, so, he was trying to put in a driveway apron without a permit, that's how that all started. The forms were out there to do it.
Got it.
He can't, he can't put anything in the right-of-way without a permit.
Got it.
The edge of pavement, he still has a gap before the edge of pavement. This isn't showing like exactly, it says it is a ten-foot alley, but the pavement width is only nine, so he still has a gap.
But typically, there's no curb there, right? There's no, there's no fence.
Correct, you're correct, there's no curb.
There's no fence.
There's no fence, so, let me give you a for instance. So, let's say you have a single-family house, and you have a driveway into your property, already paved, concrete, but you have the other side of your property, too, you could drive over that and drive your vehicle. You would be cited by code enforcement, because that is not a legal parking space, because you need a driveway apron by code to access your parking spaces. Same thing for this alley, you need a driveway apron to access this alley legally.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Carlson?
Just an ethics question. You showed a letter that was signed by Del Acosta, was that when he was with the city or on the ARC? How long ago was it?
Yes, he used to be over in, in historic preservation when he was here in two thousand and four.
How long ago, that was like fifteen years ago or something?
In two thousand and four.
Marty, I'm on the board of a nonprofit with Del Acosta, is that a conflict or not?
No, no, it's not, it's not related to the issue before you, and you have no financial stake, nor, well, let me ask you this, just for the purposes of finding out whether you can be fair and impartial irrespective of your relationship with Del Acosta.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
No big deal.
Petitioner, Helen.
Good morning, Council, Susan Johnson Velez, six oh seven West Bay Street, on behalf of the property owner Devon Baergay. Council, Mr. Baergay has owned and resided at this property at twenty-one eleven West Watchers Avenue for almost twenty-five years since nineteen ninety-five. The property is right in the middle of the twenty-one hundred block of Watchers, and as you've heard, has an alley in the rear. This alley is little you, little used, with few, if any, vehicles traveling the entire length between Jettan Street, which is the Selman Expressway right there, if you're familiar with it, and Albany Avenue to the east. In two thousand and four, he applied for and received approval for a variance to expand the existing accessory structure by adding a second story while maintaining the same building footprint and other structural elements from the original accessory structure that was on the property since nineteen fifty. So, the construction plans did show garage doors on the alley side of the structure, and the ARC approval. So, I have the memo as well, that Ms. Callaway showed. And also the ARC approval, which indicates that Del Acosta read a memo from Melanie Callaway Transportation Department into the record, and then a copy of the memo was placed in the record. However, as you can see where I've highlighted, the only references to the garage were that the garage floor never be enclosed, meaning for living purposes, and be used primarily for automobile storage, which in fact, it has been used that way since this was approved and constructed. Also, there was a reference to wood garage doors and lighting that was to be approved by staff. But there's no other mention of any other limitations on the garage, no prohibition on vehicular access to the rear, no prohibition on access to the alley through those rear doors. And so, there was no condition placed, notwithstanding the fact that the memo was read into the record and included in the record of the ARC. Since completion of the construction project in late two thousand and six, Mr. Baergay has in fact utilized those garage doors for fourteen years now, without incident, and as they were intended to be used. He recently completed construction of a two-story addition to the principal structure and related improvements to his property. Now, this addition and the related improvements do constrain access to the westernmost front garage door and continued access through that, those rear doors to the alley is, is paramount. This was designed, his second-story addition and the recent improvements that were completed about nine months ago, were designed and constructed fourteen years after the original approval and in fact, with full, well, with what he thought he had full access to that vehicular rear access to the garage. So sometime in December of twenty eighteen, he was advised through a notice of a code enforcement violation that he was not permitted to use those rear alley, rear garage doors to the alley. And as I was looking through the record on this property yesterday through the Tampa government website, in December of twenty-first of twenty eighteen, there's now a condition that's noted that was added in December twenty-first of twenty eighteen, fourteen years later, that prohibits rear access to the alley through those garage doors. So setting aside the due process issues that I hope are obvious with that imposing a condition fourteen years later and then retroactively applying it, I would like to show you what was referenced as, you know, this is a very common situation in this neighborhood. These are all pictures that were taken within the Hyde, Hyde Park Historic District, within Mr. Berge's immediate neighborhood, specifically within the boundaries of Swan, Rome, Bayshore, Howard, and the Selman Expressway. So all of these, as you can see, show rear garage doors on the alley. Some of them even have fences as well. So this is a very common situation in this neighborhood. This is the address that Ms. Callaway referred to, eighteen nineteen West Watchers. So this is their rear garage access. This was similarly an existing accessory structure that has alley, alley access that was, that was remodeled. So we have applied for, because we were advised that all of a sudden fourteen years later, again, we couldn't use this rear access, to apply for a design exception, which was then denied. And so we believe that the, the application for a design exception complies with the criteria in that this request does not interfere with the rights of others as provided in chapter twenty-seven and is not injurious to the public health, safety, or general welfare. In fact, this, this request is very common situation in the neighborhood, as evidenced by the photos that I just showed you, and approval of the request will allow Mr. Berge the same rights as other properties in the surrounding neighborhood. This does, the exception would provide a reasonable allowance of use, in fact, his continued use for use that he's had for the last fourteen years, again, without incident, and allows him to fully utilize the garage as intended. It achieves the general intent of chapter twenty-seven in the comprehensive plan. It's the minimum possible exception in light of the fact that the accessory garage was actually built within the footprint and actually utilizing some of the original structure from sixty years ago. And it is consistent with the approved plans in place for the subject property. And so in light of all those, we would ask that you approve this design exception. I do have several letters that I would like to submit into the record from neighbors. We'll show you just one. These are all in support and one neighbor actually went and took additional pictures of, these are ones that Mr. Berge didn't get, but again, showing how common this is, again, even garage with fencing adjacent to it accessing the alley. So I have letters from James Puskas, from Jim Blackwood, from Bill Kuzmic, and also Elizabeth Roach, who lives directly behind Mr. Berge and is in favor of the application and asking for your favorable consideration. Mr. Berge would like to come up and present a few facts for you and I would like to.
Devin Berge, twenty-one eleven Watchers Avenue. Like counsel said, I've lived there for twenty-five years. I'd like to present to you kind of a schematic here. Since I've lived there for so long, I know the traffic patterns in the alleyway. And this schematic basically kind of shows you, and is coded to show kind of what's going on in the alleyway. So to orient you, Watchers Avenue is on the south. Do I point up here? Do I point down here? Yeah, Watchers Avenue is down here, Jettan's to the north, Albany's to the east, I'm sorry, Jettan and the cross town to the west and Albany's to the east, alleyway's in the middle. My house is the brightly colored yellow house is in the middle of the block. So the, the three parcels with green outline on them typically use one end of the alleyway to access their properties from the rear and only that side. They typically do not use the, the whole alleyway. The one on top here is a vacant lot. I'm presuming they're going to, they were approved to build a garage in the back, so it hasn't happened yet. The properties that are outlined in yellow do not have any vehicular access at all as their properties are fenced. The properties outlined in purple do have a slab but are not typically used regularly for vehicular traffic on the, or vehicular access on the alleyway. This one is, has an R V that parks back there. This one has a slab that is not used by a vehicle. This one has a garage with a garage door that is not used. She parks in the front. The properties outlined in pink are the only ones, to my knowledge, that use the entire way of the alley. This one, it's nineteen hundred Jettan, twenty-one oh five and twenty-one oh nine. Twenty-one oh nine is my next-door neighbor. They're building a, building a garage like Transportation Melanie talked about and I presume that they will be using the entire alleyway. So there's only three that regularly use it in addition to two garbage trucks, twice, a garbage truck twice a week and a recycling truck once a week. There's very, very little traffic on the alleyway. Like counsel said, I've been using it for fourteen years without any incident. I'm happy to put up mirrors if it, if it helps the safety of, alleviates the safety concerns. As far as the ribbon goes, I didn't realize I had to get a permit for the, for the ribbon. I'm happy to get a permit for the ribbon to, to, to use it and I will do that if, if counsel approves this request. As to the eighteen nineteen Watchers, that property is fairly identical to mine. They asked for, to, to put a two-door garage door back there in two thousand and seven, which is around the same time period I went through this process. The alleyway is very identical to mine. I have here that I'd like to show. This is the A R C approval for that, for that property and it states here specifically, reduce requi, it's hard to read because the A R C stamps on it, reduce requirement of rear garage entrance setback from property line. Administrative appeal, vehicular access from ten foot to thirty-two inches. I measured mine. My garage door is thirty-five inches from my property line. They put a, a ribbon in there as well. This is the city, this is A R C's approval of the, of that administrative appeal allowing basically what I'm asking for. So I think it's important that, you know, these city code be applied consistently across all property lines, in addition, all different properties, in addition to all the other photographs I took that counsel presented to you. Again, I was not aware that I needed an administrative appeal when I went through this process. I would have asked for one had I known. This was a surprise when Transportation read a letter into the record at the hearing. A R C did not discuss the possibility that there would be a problem with vehicular access at the time. And now fourteen year late, fourteen years later, I have to go through this process and try to get it from city council. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Counsel, we'd like to reserve the remainder of our time, but I would like to also admit into the record the map that Mr. Berge showed you and also the approval that he showed you for the eighteen nineteen Watchers.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Dingfeld.
Just as a matter of disclosure, Ms. Attorney Johnson Velez and I used to work together and go back twenty-plus years, but I have no bias in that regard either. I do have a few questions, Susan. Y'all, as part of this process, you had to post, I think, post or, or notice the neighbors?
That's correct.
Did you receive any negative comments?
I did not receive any comments.
Okay, and your client?
Did you receive any comments?
Not negative.
No, not negative, only answers.
All right. In regard to the document referenced, that you put up, Delacosta's document, and he referenced Ms. Callaway's document, is, did that document make it into any of the files? Do we have a copy of Ms. Callow, the alleged Ms. Callaway's document from back then?
I mean, it says in there that the memo was read into the record and it was included in the A R C record.
But did it?
But they didn't impose any conditions precluding, notwithstanding their awareness of the record.
Is the implication that, are you saying that Ms. Callaway had approved it back then? Or, or that she had objected to it back then?
I'm, I'm acknowledging that she objected to it.
Okay.
It was read into the record, but that the A R C, notwithstanding her memo, did not impose any conditions that prohibited or limited vehicular access to that rear alley.
Okay, thanks. I was a little confused. Thanks for the clarification. And then finally, if I was in this situation, I guess, may, maybe this is just personal, I shouldn't go there, but if, if anybody, a safe driver was in this situation, wouldn't, wouldn't one perhaps back into the garage? And, and I guess, I guess I was just wondering perhaps anecdotally, does your client ever back in from the alley? That way you can come out forward and it's safer coming out forward? One of Ms. Callaway's concerns was if you're backing out of the garage into the alley, you know, your visibility is not as good in terms of what's coming in the alley.
Right, I mean, I mean.
And sir, please state your name for the record.
Sorry, Devin Berge, twenty-one eleven Watchers. Again, again, I've used this for, this door for a long time and it sounds very simple, but what I, you know, there's not much traffic. Every time when I leave the garage and I exit into the alleyway, I simply go out to the alleyway and make sure there are no vehicles. It's not a trafficked alleyway and then I get in my car and I go. I mean, it's really not a trafficked alleyway. So there's never been a concern and it happens all over Hyde Park. I do have front access. I use both because I have numerous vehicles. So, you know, the, the, the design was made to, to, for the use of those garage doors and use was implied as far as I'm concerned. It was never denied by anybody throughout this entire process and that's the, really the problem here, I guess, so.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And my last question is to legal counsel, whoever's advising us today, Ms. Wells. Boy, the word stopple just jumps right out of me on this one, going back to our law school days. A stopple, of course, well, you can explain it, but, but it concerns me that we have one arm of the government, of the city government, doing, doing and saying and approving one thing and then for, for very good justification, Ms. Callaway, who's always concerned about our safety, has another opinion fourteen years later. I mean, at the time, and she's consistent fourteen year, for fourteen years. So a stopple? And perhaps explain that as well.
The, the question would be whether the city would be stopped from taking action now based upon the A R C's approval back in two thousand and four. That issue really isn't before us at the moment. What I would ask this counsel to do is look at the application that is before you and that's an application for design review. Testimony that you've heard consists of Ms. Callaway's concerns about public health, safety, and welfare and the triangle visibility issue that is presented in this situation. On the other hand, you've also heard testimony and seen evidence with regard to the pattern in Hyde Park Historic District and I think that is probably the pattern that the A R C was respecting at the time they took action initially. So this counsel, sitting as the zoning administrator, you get to consider all the evidence before you, that which is competent is substantial, and then make a decision on whether or not to accept the design exception application that was filed with the zoning administrator or to deny it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, is anyone here for public comment on item number fifty-eight? If so, please come forward. Go ahead, ma'am, and please state your name.
My name is June Robaya and I reside at twenty-one thirteen Watchers Avenue. I've lived there for sixty years. I'm opposed to granting a design change to my next-door neighbor at twenty-one eleven Watchers Avenue because I feel that it's going to create a serious public safety issue for anyone who uses this alley. The alley behind twenty-one eleven Watchers is the only alley in Hyde Park that I know of that has two ten miles per hour signs posted at each end of the alley due to high traffic use. I heard it stated that it wasn't a well-used alley. It is, and here's the sign that has been posted. I'm going to be mentioning some specific information concerning the renting of this rear dwelling as it is extremely relevant to this presentation. The petitioner is prohibited from renting the rear dwelling and in August twenty-fourteen, the petitioner was cited for renting the rear upstairs dwelling. Consequently, in February twenty-fifteen, the petitioner's attorney, Susan Johnson Velez, appealed the decision of the city zoning administrator. The appeal was denied by hearing officer Stephen Pfeifer.
I believe we have an objection.
And, and wait, and, and I think the time for that would probably be rebuttal.
What do you think?
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of order.
Yes, sir.
I'm only, my only concern is I, it's interesting what the young lady is pointing out, but my concern is tainting the record. I just want to make sure that our counsel, either Mr. Shelby or Ms. Wells, is comfortable with this sort of additional information. This wasn't the, the site triangles that, that Ms. Wells was referring to before.
And before.
I just want to make sure it's a point of order that we don't taint the record.
And before they answer that, Councilman Miranda.
Let me, let me see. I'm not an attorney and I don't possess to be attorney or judge, but just common sense. All of us have enough experience and attorneys certainly have more than we do, but when you, you can go up there for three minutes and say whatever you want to say, whether it's right or wrong or within the record or tainting it or not tainting it, we only have to listen to what's, what the petitioner applied for. Not if there's a ten-foot sign, not if there's a traffic on the alley, none of that, not if there's rental of a property, but if somebody wants to object, then say it, so be it. I can't control whether anybody's going to say it with or against this thing. So I, I know what I'm, I can only apply what the law tells me within this hearing, but the petitioner or, not the petitioner, but those in objection can say anything they want. They got three minutes. That's just my feeling. This is America, up to now. And I change quickly.
And Ms. Wells, Mr. Shelby.
Well, Ms. Wells can add to it, but certainly if there's an objection or there's a concern, the opportunity, as was stated, is, is for rebuttal. This is quasi-hudicial. We don't adhere to strictly the laws of evidence with regard to that. And Mr. Miranda, Councilman Miranda is right on point with the advisory that we would give to this board and obviously, as Mr. Miranda clearly stated on the record, the board is well aware of its, its responsibilities relative to the evidence.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm supposed to go ahead?
Oh, you may, go ahead.
In Stephen Pfeifer's recommended order, he stated, "The conclusion is inescapable that the petitioner sought to hide his intention to continue using the accessory structure as a separate dwelling unit when he submitted plans to the city in two thousand and four and two thousand and five." And on May twenty-first, twenty fifteen, the city council unanimously approved the hearing officer's decision. Again, in August twenty-nineteen, petitioner Devin Beller, for the second time, was cited again for renting the rear upstairs dwelling. The petitioner, as he has done before, has every intention to continue renting the rear dwelling. This is the reason that he has decided to request this design change. For the past thirteen years, he has been able to use this existing driveway from Watchers Avenue to park his vehicles in the downstairs garage. Now, what he needs to do is he has found out now that what he needs to do after thirteen years is that he needs to free this up so that he can have his renters park there. By parking there, this would require the petitioner to use the alley to enter and exit the rear dwelling to park his vehicles. He's waited thirteen years and now he's asking for a design change. He has not used that rear exit for entering and exiting this whole time. I have several other photos that may help you understand.
And ma'am, your time is up unfortunately.
And my husband is going to show them to you now. And I appreciate your time.
We appreciate it, ma'am. Next, please.
Dennis Robaya, twenty-one thirteen Watchers Avenue. I've lived there for fifty years. As the photo shows right now that you're looking at, he has been coming in and out of that garage for thirteen years, just as you see it. As we speak today, that's, that's a recent photo. The only reason he's asked for design change because he's rented not once, but twice. He's a registered real estate agent. He knows better. He's rented twice and been cited twice by the city of Tampa. He's been required to move the stove out of, out of there. He's required to move the microwave, all cooking appliances, twice, and he keeps doing it. The only reason he, he wants to use this design change is because, just like my wife said, if he rents again, which I'm sure he's going to do it, they can't, he can't come in and out of his garage, so he wants to come out of the back. Now, I want to show you, it's already been stated that, you know, he, he, he didn't know about the permit. Well, he cut, he cut the alley. There it is right there. There's, this is a picture of his vehicle and as Ms. Callaway has been consistent since two thousand and four, she stated back in two thousand and four, because I've lived there and I followed this whole thing, he can't come out of that garage without posing a serious public safety concern to the people that use this alley. This alley is used way more than he's saying. This alley was one of the first alleys paved by the city of Tampa back in, in the sixties when we moved there. You can see Tampa's one of the hardest working departments. Look at that, look at that solid waste worker. That's an accident waiting to happen. I don't want to see it. I'm not going to. I don't wanna see it, I'm not gonna be responsible for something like that. I wouldn't wanna, wouldn't see anybody get hurt. He's literally walking on his property, that's how tight it is. There's the, I don't know who that is, there is someone that lives in the neighborhood walking, I, I assume that's a dad, with a, with a, with his dog and a child on a scooter. I tried to get pictures of the people that go up and down the alley in electric scooters, they're way too fast for me. Here's, here's a, here's a, a truck. You see the black line? That's, that, to the right of that black line is city property. To the left of that black line is private property, that's how tight it is. There's another truck. If he would, if he puts a...
Thank you very much, sir.
...an apron, he would have it crushed.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your...
Thank you for your, for your time.
Yes, sir. Okay, rebuttal? And is there anybody here else to comment on fifty-eight? Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you again, Susan Johnson Velez. So, I guess now is my time to object to any evidence of what happened five years ago, and with respect to renting has no bearing on the design exception that is before you today. I would just reiterate again that, you know, the motivation for seeking the design exception was the code enforcement notice that we received fourteen years after having used this, this rear access. And again, the construction plans and the construction that took place to expand the existing home, that was all designed and constructed with continued alley access in mind, and that was, that was the sole reason. Were it not for that code violation, we wouldn't even be aware that there was an assertion that we were denied that alley access, because again, there was nothing in the ARC that limited or precluded access through those rear doors in the alley. And as Ms. Wells noted, it, it appears consistent that the ARC does respect that pattern within historic Hyde Park and, you know, properties, including Mr. and Mrs. Robaya, whose property also has alley access for, for vehicles as well. So, with that, I believe we've submitted all the information for your consideration, and we would request your approval of the design exception application.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Okay. Yes, sir.
Is it Ms. Callaway? The, the proposers said that something changed in their record in two thousand eighteen, can you just address that? They said that, that, that from their perspective, sorry if I got the words wrong, but they said, in their perspective, something in the file changed in two thousand eighteen.
It didn't really change, so this is the original approval from the ARC, and if you can see it here, they're requesting setbacks, but when I objected, I specifically had code criteria. If they were to grant access of vehicular access, they would've said that in their motion. They never approved vehicular access to the rear, it's not in their motion. My, they had, nothing in their motion says that. It says rear setbacks, and it doesn't say anything of reducing the width from twenty-four to twelve, twenty-six to twelve, at the time it was twenty-six, twelve point four, nothing. Now, in two thousand eighteen, he, he had tried to put in a driveway without a permit. He, code enforcement was called, and he was cited. That's what changed. But he never had it through the ARC approval.
If we can, if we can...
Additional rebuttal?
Ms. Ja, yes. If there's any additional questions.
Oh, yeah, of course.
And then we'll allow rebuttal for the last...
We always do that, yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Callaway, and the, the petitioner had a dramatic drawing of the alley in different colors of yellow and so forth and so on, with some that have back doors that open like his on the garage doors.
Yes.
Are any of those being used by automobiles coming in and out of the backyard?
I'm aware of one property that is using it, it has a ten-foot setback from the alley, so they have twenty feet to maneuver, and it's set back ten feet. There's another structure that also used vehicular access, and that is located at the edge, at the eighteen, nineteen structure, that was the thirty-two inches that they gave, that was set at four, they are fourteen feet to maneuver. That's clear on the approved plan, I had stamped plan that I showed you, it was fourteen point two feet. None of them have twelve point four feet like he has. No, none of them are that narrow. The new one next door to him has the full twenty-four.
Next question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. The sign that I see, although it's not related to this, I just, in my mind, wonder why an alley has a speed zone of ten miles per hour. Are there any other speed zones in the city of Tampa?
So, by code, there are already alleys are, have a speed limit of ten miles per hour or less. That's just code.
All right, so that's the code.
But the, the signage is very particular, I agree. I did, it wasn't, I know, that is in a very rare instances, and that's the only one I know of that has that sign.
I understand that, but that sign can also be interpreted to be that it's okay to go ten miles an hour in the alley.
Yes, ten miles.
It can mean a lot of things. I mean, if that's the case, any alley in the city of Tampa, then you can drive ten miles an hour with or without the sign.
Correct, that's, that is correct, it's just, that's odd that it's signed.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Chair, please. And with, with, the second story was, was asked for.
In two thousand and four, yes.
And it, it, I, I see it asked for an alley access. Was it specifically designed with a garage door, or was that alley access considered a door, French door, any other way to, to...
That was granted, that door was granted after, what happens when you're, just like a PD, you have to have a set of waivers. In the ARC, you have to have a set of waivers. They never waived their vehicular access reduction. That's what he's asking for right now. He never requested that, that was never part of the request. Now, doors were approved, the access for the vehicle, 'cause it does not meet code, was not granted at the time. That's why he has to go through the design exception now.
Thank you.
Councilman Carlson.
As, as one or more people said, this configuration is throughout Hyde Park, and I don't know if it's an official preference or not, but, but my understanding anecdotally from Hyde Park is that the preference is that people park behind instead of parking in front, that there's a, there's a preference to put the garages behind, and the alley access is available throughout Hyde Park. Is there something particular about this alley? Is it, it, they talked about the traffics, one says it's highly trafficked, other says it isn't, but is this alley particularly narrow compared to the other alleys, or is it just around this house that it's narrow? What's, what's different about this alley?
This, this alley is paved very nicely, not all alleys are paved in pretty good shape. It also is ten foot wide. The alleys, alleys vary from ten feet to fifteen feet wide. It can be either one of those, usually by flats, sometimes twelve, but this one is ten-foot alley width. There's nothing particular, except there is traffic on this alley, and solid waste picks up, solid waste picks up on some alleys, have gone away from it, on other alleys it gets too narrow, it's a little more dangerous safety-wise, so they don't always pick up. But I have been consistent in objecting to these reductions for years. I have copy of all my memos, of plenty of the ones that she has shown that I had objected and ARC had approved. It's just in this instance, he never requested nor was approved for vehicular access in the rear, that's why we're here today.
Thank you.
Sir? I don't know whether I wanna ask staff or ask the petitioner's attorney, but let's proceed.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. And then rebuttal? And we'll give you, what do you, three minutes?
Sure. Again, Susan Johnson Velez, I, I just wanted to clarify...
And, and I'm sorry, go forward.
I'm sorry, I just, forgive me, but, all, does this, is you, is you, have you decided to not ask your question?
I decided not to ask staff the question, I'd rather ask the petitioner and/or the petitioner's lawyer. Is, is that allowable?
As long as the petitioner is allowed to have rebuttal after all the questions have been asked. So, my suggestion would be, if it's appropriate to ask the question, the time to do it is now, and then to give the petitioner the opportunity...
No, I'll ask the petitioner directly.
If that's what you wish.
Thank you. And act, actually, the petitioner's attorney, you showed many, many, many pictures of similar circumstances. What makes this garage, excuse me, what makes this alley? Let me digress. What makes this request so different from the others? The others I saw, there was plenty of setback from the garage, from, from the property line to the garage, where there was adequate form. So, so the basic request here is the change for the traffic?
I don't, I'm not understanding your question.
Okay, what is the difference between all the pictures that you showed me of other garages for this garage that have aprons? As I said bef, said it earlier, these other garages have ten-foot setbacks. What, what is the basic request? It looks to me like there's only two feet access from the setbacks for this garage. Now, are you following me? What, what is, what is the basic reasoning for this request?
I don't believe that all of the photos that I showed show a ten-foot setback, and Mr. Barrage...
I didn't say all of them, I said some of them.
Devon Barrage, twenty-one eleven Watchers. All, all of those pictures that we showed do not have a ten-foot setback. All of the ribbons, I, I didn't get my measuring tape out, but, you know...
I could ask you to show me those pictures again, and I, I can show you two or three of them. I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to wrap my head around what makes your case so particular that it separates itself from the rest of the neighborhood?
I guess my point is, it doesn't separate itself, because all of these other garages have vehicular access on alleyways that do not appear to meet the setback rules, given the width of the alley and the ribbon of the driveway. And that was the purpose of me going around and checking them all, and I'm pointing out to the fact of eighteen, nineteen Watchers, the one that I focused on, that one has a thirty-two inch setback that was approved by transportation and approved by the ARC, which mirrors my particular circumstance. It's exactly the same. It's one block on the other side of Albany, so the width of the alley is very similar, if, if, if not exactly the same, it's a, it's an exact same case that was approved by transportation and approved by the ARC. That's why I'm focusing on that particular one. The other ones, I went through, Exella, all of those pictures, I researched the cases, and in no case in Exella did I find any kind of restriction on use. And all of those garages that I showed are used regularly, as I could tell by tire tracks and by other evidence, they are used regularly by vehicles. And there was no, there's, I went through all of the records, and there were no restrictions by transportation, the ARC approved, approved the design, but there's no use restrictions at all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And, and before you begin rebuttal, I wanna get a motion, if I may. I know we, we have one more hearing.
Do you have three minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, okay, we have a motion by Councilman Miranda, second by Councilman Citro, all in favor, any opposed? Yes, I believe it was, yeah. Okay. Go ahead, ma'am, for your rebuttal.
Two things, just very briefly. So, I, I, I think what staff is suggesting is that because there was no, there's no specific mention in the ARC that allows it, but there's really no specific mention in the ARC approval that precludes it. So, he reasonably has used this, I think, I, I, I don't know which inference you want, but I mean, in fairness to the property owner, I think if, if you're gonna say it's precluded, then it needs to specifically state it, and it's not specifically stated in there. And in fact, to your question, Mr. Carlson, what I referred to earlier was, when I was preparing for this hearing, I did go through the ACILAS system, and I looked up the permit to see what the parameters were, and there is now a condition on the system. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to print it out, but if you look on this property, on that approval, there is now a condition that was added on December twenty-first of two thousand eighteen that says vehicular access, that, that says no vehicular access to the alley. So, it's now a condition that's added fourteen years after his original approval. So, that, that, without any notice to him, other than you have a code violation. So, I, I just, I think that's a due process...
You can finish your statement.
Okay, I just, I think it's a due process issue, but, so we're, we're...
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you...
We're, we're just trying to remedy this, and so again, that was, that was what triggered this design exception request, because we went to staff, that's what we were told that we needed to do. So, that's, that's what triggered this, and nothing more, nothing less, it's just this notice now, and, and this condition now that's appeared nine months ago.
Anything else, ma'am?
That's all.
Okay, and Councilman Carlson, do you have a question, sir?
Tell me it's appropriate to ask now that we've done rebuttal.
You may, I mean, if...
I just wanted to ask if, if, if a document like that ended up in the file, isn't there, you mentioned due process, isn't there supposed to be some due process? How, how would a document like that end up in the file, and is it there? I don't know the...
Now, to whom are you, are you...
I guess the city staff.
Okay, then, well, okay.
Or legal.
And then after, if I've made before, then after this, if Ms. Johnson Velez has any further rebuttal, of course you may...
If that document is there, is it possible that the city can put something that changes a, a use of a property without letting the owner know?
I'm not prepared today to speak to that document, as this is the first time I'm hearing about it, but I think when we're talking about due process, the fact that two different citations or notices of violation have been issued, that was the notice that there's an issue with how this alley access is being used. You know, looking at how that document made its way into the file, that is something that I would need additional time to look into.
Do you have any rebuttal to that, Ms. Johnson Velez, narrowly tailored to that question?
No, I mean, I, I, I don't, all, all I know, it's not a document, if you, if you go through, well, I didn't see a document, but when you click on conditions on, on your computer screen, it says no driveway and no alley access through the rear garage doors.
Thank you very much.
That's a, that's a condition, and there's a date, twelve twenty-one of two thousand eighteen. That's all, that's all I know. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, okay. Motion to close.
Who's to close?
We have a motion to close by Councilman Goodse, and by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor, any opposed? What is the pleasure of council?
A reminder for the record, Mr. Chairman, you do have in front of you the criteria on which to rely and apply the competent substantial evidence that you find, if you have any findings of fact. You also have the sample motions in front of you, whether you choose to approve or deny the application for the design exception.
Councilman Maniscalco.
Then I'd like to go ahead and make a move, make a motion to deny the application for design exception D one dash nineteen dash one oh seven, because the petitioner has failed to demonstrate that the petition, if the waiver is granted, is consistent with the applicable standard set forth in section twenty-seven dash sixty E five. A question that was asked, I think, by Councilman Citro, was what makes this property different from all the other ones and whatnot, and I don't see the burden of proof as to why this should be, why this is a unique enough situation that it should be upheld.
And, and before we vote, Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think what makes this situation unique is what I spoke to earlier, which is a stopple. Okay, we've got two branches of, of the city government saying two different things, and I think that's wrong, and frankly, well, I won't give my legal judgment, but I just think it's, it's, it's just wrong. The, the ARC is all about protecting the district, Hyde Park District, and specifically, as I think Mr. Carlson alluded to, encourages the use of alleys, discouraging the use of the, of the streets for parking, for driving, et cetera, et cetera, trying to preserve that walkability of Watchers and let the cars go up and down, which was a historic approach to Hyde Park District and many other historic districts throughout the city. That's why, you know, week in and week out, we, we try and encourage the preservation of those alleys to, for people to use. On top of that, here we have a situation where that body, which sits in the same exact seats we're sitting in, approved it, approved garage doors. Okay, they didn't approve it, he didn't put in garage doors to be aesthetically pleasing to his backdoor neighbors, he put in garage doors to use. Now, his next door neighbor says he does use them, doesn't use them, he says he does use them, that's a factual question, but the bottom line is, to me, it's just common sense. The other concern I do have is, is equal protection. The only folks who are, are here objecting, use the alley from their garage with the rear loading. He's presented testimony showing that the neighbors up and down his, his particular block used the alley, rear-loaded. I don't, I don't get it. I, I don't, this one seems to me like, like a no-brainer. Did the ARC perhaps make a mistake going contrary to Ms. Callaway's professional opinion fourteen years ago? Perhaps, but what's done is done, and I, and I respectfully would, would vote against your motion, Mr. Maniscalco.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Miranda. Councilman Miranda.
Chairman, I also feel that, in looking at all the facts, the facts that are factual was presented, not all the facts that were said about other things, that whether we erred or not, somewhere in the, in the system, there were some changes made in twenty-eighteen, which doesn't refer exactly to what happened prior. And being here for some period of time, there are exceptions that we've always used in that area, especially to use the alley. I guess maybe we've, in my tenure, I've rezoned maybe fifty to a hundred units that have the alleyway to go in and out egress. In fact, just yesterday, I went to Lowe's, and I went down Magdill Avenue when I turned right on either Euclid or El Prado, forget which, there's a bunch of brand-new condos that you don't park anywhere but in the back. Not only do you park in the back, and those were permitted, and I'm not making that reference of this case, but they even have a mother-in-law suite, and I don't know why they always say mother-in-law, I guess they always kill the father. I don't know what happened. But there's always mother-in-law suites, there's never a father-in-law suite, and I still don't understand that. But the parking is on in the back, and they were designed that way. Is it ten foot? Of course not. They're a little bit larger because it was designed for that and for the mother-in-law suite. And, and I, I'm looking at this, and I tell myself, it's six of one, half of dozen of the other, and, but I got to go with the evidence that was presented, not what, six of one, half of the other, because it means the same thing. And one department says one thing, the other one says another thing, and it's got to be changed somewhere in the future so that we can be consistent with whatever the ruling is. But I also feel that I, I will not be supporting the motion of the floor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Gudes, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
I have Dean Powder, the A R C-
Yes.
Yes.
And Miranda.
I have Nelson.
Okay. What is further the pleasure of counsel? Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll move to approve the application for design exception D E one dash nineteen dash one oh seven, overriding the administrative decision, because petitioner has demonstrated that the petition, if granted, if the waiver is granted, is consistent with the applicable general standards set forth in section twenty-seven dash sixty E five, specifically for the facts that I mentioned at length in my opposition to the earlier motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, yeah, no.
Thank you very much. Okay. It's about twelve fifteen right now, more or less.
Fifty-nine.
Yeah, now, I, I want to, with everybody at lunch, how are we doing? I mean, I, I-
Let's, let's blow through.
You want to enlist one now? Yeah, go for it. We're going to, Councilman Gudes has a personal appointment at once, so we're going to let him do his motions.
If we can, though, counsel, I've been informed by Ms. Wells that this hearing should not be lengthy because there is no oral argument attached to it. Is that correct, Ms. Wells?
Yeah, the petition-
And the petitioner is not present.
Okay. So, if we can, you can leave.
Yeah, let's-
Okay. Let's first, just so that he doesn't have to wait, Councilman Gudes, if you want to make your motion, sir, you may.
Thank you, gentlemen. You know, we've been working very hard on the Cultural enrichment center in East Tampa, and I've been approached by several of our local congress representatives and state representatives and senators in reference to helping get some more money from the federal and state level. So, at this time, I would like to make a motion to ask the administration to appoint a grant-writing staff member to complete grant application that would help fund the Alborn Park Cultural enrichment center. Timing of the essence, I would like to ask that this occur within the next two weeks. On a side note, I have been able to gather several applications for such a grant from state and federal agencies that my office will provide.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, I, I believe, a first, second by, by Councilman Miranda, tongue-tied here right now, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? And, and let me, before you do it, just say, well done on this, ma'am. I mean it. I, you're, you're getting money, you're going to get money from the county, the city, the federal government, the state money, you're probably going to get some money from the Vatican. You're going everywhere. So, so, well, well done. I mean it.
And it's, it's, well, what I'm saying, and I'm glad that, it's true, because I think some of my colleagues have heard some of the other representatives in the city talk, the city want to try to help get this project going. So, it's-
Thinking outside of the box, so good for you. I mean that.
Mr. Chairman, second motion. A lot of times, and now that I'm on the part of council, our youth athletic programs in the city are, are sometimes in turmoil, and a lot of issue with the football programs, baseball, reference to fields, reference to background, just a lot of issues, and a lot of times, it puts the recreation department in a, in a spin of who's right and who's wrong, and trying to be fair with everybody. And for years, I've talked with some of the recreational staff about coming up with what I call a youth sports commission, like other cities have. I know the county has some type of seminar board, but I would like to make a motion for the legal department and the Parks and Recreation Department administration, research the creation of an ordinance for a youth sports commission to include advisory board to assist in creating policies regarding youth athletes in the city of Tampa. I would like this report back on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty, sir.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, a second by Councilman Dingfelder, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, sir.
And my last one, sir.
Oh, sorry.
I told you a week ago, Chairwoman Schamberg of the school board wanted to address council for maybe five to seven minutes. I'd like to see if we can get that done on October twenty-fourth, as a workshop date, and have her come forward with the information she needs to provide to this council.
Let me see how that date looks. I'm sure we're-
October ninth?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
It's, she said it would be very short and brief, but she had not, with the recent changes in the school district, she wants at least to keep council some information.
And then the workshops, and also that you have staff supports following that.
That's-
You've got a short nine.
That is a long time.
Well, she said it would be about five to seven minutes, so we didn't do that.
That's fine. I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll grant deference to the chairwoman of, of the school board. Somebody second?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Gudes, second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor. Any opposed?
And, Mr. Chairman, just for the purposes of having the chair for the school board coming in, did you wish to have that set? Because presently, this is under your old system, all of them are set for nine o'clock.
Yeah.
I just don't know how you wish to perhaps give some guidance as to when the chair should appear.
Yes, specific times?
We're, what, what, is she looking at in the morning?
I think it was in the morning, so I think-
Okay. So, how about we do it after the commendations, which probably should be around nine-thirty?
Again, she said it would be very short.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir? Thank you. Okay. Next, we move to our next item, and before we do that, with our friends at the Clerks Tower, y'all okay with going forward? Okay. We move onward to our next item, which is sixty-
Fifty-nine.
Oh, fifty-nine. Thank you.
We can take it without one.
Without one?
We can do it without one.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Kate Wells with the Office of the City Attorney. So, this item is a review hearing, but it's different than the one you just heard. The one you just heard was a de novo standard of review. You were able to take testimony and new evidence and make a decision as if you were the, the original decision-maker. Unlike that case, this is a recommended order from a hearing officer on a determination from the zoning administrator, which was issued earlier this year on March eleventh regarding the legality of the existing accessory structure located at eight-three-one-one B North Sim Street, which was being used as a dwelling unit. This is not a public hearing, as new evidence is not allowed to be introduced today. The recommended order resulting from the hearing held on May thirteenth presents findings of fact, conclusions of law, and a recommendation that the zoning administrator's decision be upheld. The hearing officer found that the smaller structure is an accessory structure. As an accessory structure, the smaller structure cannot be legally used as a dwelling unit, and thus, the dwelling in the accessory structure must be removed. No party has filed exceptions or a request for oral argument. I have prepared sample motions and a copy of section twenty-seven dash sixty-one. You will find that the action to be taken today is set forth in section twenty-seven dash sixty-one subsection J one E Romanet three. It's at the top of the fourth page of the handout. The motions that you can consider today include adopting the recommended order as your final order, or remanding this back to the hearing officer if, if additional findings of fact are necessary, if you find that one or more findings of fact were not based on competent substantial evidence, or did not comply with the essential requirements of the law. And finally, the other motion that you can consider today is to modify the recommended order by modifying or rejecting one or more conclusions of law. In that situation, there are four steps counsel would have to take. Counsel must identify the conclusion or conclusions of law being rejected or modified. Counsel must state with particularity the reasons for modifying or rejecting the conclusion or conclusions of law. Counsel must state the proposed or substituted conclusion of law, and finally, you must make a finding that counsel's substitution of a conclusion of law is a reasonable, is as reasonable or more reasonable than the one being substituted in the recommended order. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Anything? Okay. Is any, oh, yes, or go ahead, sir.
I, I'm a little bit at a loss, because I, for whatever reason, administratively or what have you, I don't have the recommended order or the findings of facts. Is that part of the backup for item fifty-nine?
Yes, sir. The recommended order, as well as the entire record of the hearing on May thirteenth, was included in sire and backup to this, this item.
Do you have the copy of the, at least the recommended order, findings of facts?
I do.
And what, why is the original petitioner not here? Do we know? Ms. Coyle, you, you had any communication with them?
If I could say, Councilman Dingfelder, the code is very specific with the opportunity for the petitioner to have to appear, would have to give notice of wanting to have oral argument. Is that correct under the statute?
Well, they could be present, but in order to address this council, they would have had to be, they're filed exceptions, and at the same time, filed a request for oral argument.
So, in effect, counsel, what, that, by doing so, that person has waived their opportunity to be able to respond to counsel's questions unless counsel had made specific findings during the course of the hearing, during the course of their decision as to what they wish to do.
Were they represented by counsel?
They were not. This was, they were pro se petitioners in that matter.
So, the bottom line, the bottom line in terms of the finding of facts, and I'm not going to have time to read through them, because it's, this document's like ten pages, is that they had a, they had a structure, it was a le, it's a legal structure, but it's not a legal dwelling unit. So, what was it, a garage or something, or?
When they purchased the property in nineteen ninety-six, there were two structures on the property. One is the dwelling unit, the second was an accessory structure that at the time, according to their testimony, was being leased out and has been consistently leased or rented out since that time. So, the issue when this matter went before the zoning administrator was whether or not on, I believe it was June eleventh, nineteen eighty-seven, whether at that time, in order to make this a legal non-conforming use, that being the accessory structure being used as a dwelling unit, the, the property owners had the burden of proof of establishing that back in nineteen eighty-seven, June eleventh precisely, that the accessory structure was being used as a dwelling unit. The hearing officer found that the petitioners did not meet their burden of proof, that while it was clearly established that there were two structures on that property, the hearing officer did not find any evidence to support that the accessory structure was being used as a dwelling unit as of June eleventh, nineteen eighty-seven.
Is there any reference to what that structure appears, what, you know, does it appear to be residential? Did it appear to be a garage? Did it, was there, is there anything in the record along those lines?
I'll let Ms. Coyle answer that question. I've got one page left, and that's in the- Kathy Coyle, zoning administrator of the city.
This exhibit was one of the exhibits presented and reviewed by the hearing officer during that session. This is the property appraiser card or record dated January fifteenth, nineteen eighty-seven, so that did predate the zoning change in June eleven. It recorded on this document that there was, this is the main building right here, and this is where they capture plumbing, electrical, heating, flooring, everything else. They captured that there was one bath, one toilet, one lavatory, one sink in the building. At the bottom, under letter K, other buildings. This is where the eighteen-by-eighteen accessory structure was captured, and it was simply a concrete block, eighteen-by-eighteen building, and it didn't register that it had any plumbing in it, toilets, or anything else. The, the plumbing and the fixtures were located in the main structure only. If there were to be any evidence, this is where you would, we would have found it, or they would have presented it from.
So, it doesn't disprove it, it just doesn't prove it? I guess-
The burden was on the-
Right.
-property owner to prove it. This is public record, and it was a-
I mean, the mere, the mere fact that that document didn't, didn't speak to it didn't necessarily-
Well, the property appraiser captures what's on the property and those fixtures, and how the buildings are arranged in order to make the assessment of whether or not they're dwelling units, and then for tax purposes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If I may, just for the record, typically, where there has not been a request for oral argument, there's no discussion as we're having during the hearing. Would I, counsel, of course, on its own motion can allow oral argument. I think, though, this is not necessarily in the nature of oral, oral argument, it's just a clarification of, of what the record consists of. So, I just wanted to clarify that for the record in the event.
So, it's an up or down vote, so this is, okay.
Yes, sir.
That is, that's correct. Okay. May I have a motion to close?
Send one to close.
We have a motion to close by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Miranda, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any opposed.
What is the pleasure of counsel, sir?
The question.
Second.
Denial of the hearing officer.
If I, if I can.
Afforded decision of hearing officer.
We have a motion by Councilman Miranda, a second by Councilman Maniscalco, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. We move onward to motions and reports. Councilman Dingfelder, I know you had a few, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. In regard to the folks from Davis Island who have requested that, that, that they get form-based, or at least consideration of the request for form-based code and possibly an overlay district, I'd like a report back from, from staff on that request, both philosophically as well as financially. The opportunity to comply with that request, and Ms. Coyle left, but perhaps about, I don't know, in November, regular meeting, anybody?
You have a calendar for that?
No, I got too much in front of me.
Yeah, I do that.
Mr. Dingfelder, if I may, and it's, I believe, was this the request a few weeks ago that Tom Snelling did respond to and basically said that there wasn't inadequate staff currently at Development Services to respond to this request? Am I correct in under, does-
I don't remember that, but-
That's the only thing I would be concerned about, is if you're asking for the same report that you got a couple of weeks ago.
I don't know if that was specific on Davis Island. I don't know if that was specific on Davis Island. I don't remember it. Anybody?
It seemed as if there was one on Davis Island and one in West Shore Palms. Is that something?
I think there was West Shore Palms.
The speakers did make reference to a letter that had been received from the city relative to that request. I don't know whether the council received that letter or not.
Okay. So, well, let me, let me tighten up my request then. In a November regular meeting.
November 21st.
November 21st during staff reports, a quick staff report in person from the planning department specifically as to the feasibility and how much it would cost to, to respond to the Davis Island request.
And just, I did receive confirmation that that report was addressed to Davis Island? The, I'm sorry, the report that came back a couple of weeks ago from Mr. Snelling basically saying that at this point in time, there wasn't adequate staff at Development Services to do the work that would be involved in developing a form-based code for Davis Island?
Okay. So, that's fine, but I'd still like to hear back from them in terms of how much that's going to cost. Maybe they just need to go outside and contract outside to do it because we do that on occasion as you recall.
And then one other thing I would add is today you approved a contract for an outside consultant that is reviewing Development Services, and that's also something that several of us on staff are going to be doing in the near future, is looking at the Development Services Department, looking at staffing needs, looking at how it can be better organized, coordinated, improved upon. So, I think it is all tied into that as well.
All right. In light of that, I'll extend this to, let's say, February, and perhaps we'll have a little more idea of the direction the department's going to be going in February.
February 6th.
February 6th. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, second by Councilwoman Scalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. In regard to the parking issue, the disabled or handicapped parking issue, perhaps a compromise is in order, especially with the financial concerns that some council members expressed as well as staff. So, I would move to that we would direct legal staff to create a provision in Chapter 15 that would extend the opportunity for handicap parking to six hours by disabled. I agree. I think if, if somebody needs eight hours, that probably means they have a full-time job downtown. Maybe the on-street parking is not the best solution. But, but in regard to some more temporary type parking, if they have to go to court or something like that, I believe six hours, based upon the testimony we heard from the gentleman a few weeks ago, six hours might be more appropriate than the four.
We have, yes, sir.
Could I just make a, would you accept a friendly amendment to ask someone from budgeting or the mayor's office to just give us a recommendation on where they would find the $600,000?
Well, I think part of the, part of the problem is that that would say that we would agree with the, with that $600,000 figure, and, and I think that it had some holes in it. You know, I mean.
When was the last time that a pricing plan was done for parking in general? Do you all know?
On-street parking?
It was a parking, excuse me, pardon me, Mr. Chair. There was a parking study that was done by the Downtown Partnership, I think the last year or so. I don't know if that's adequate or not.
That's, that's true, and I don't think, I don't think we've responded to it yet.
But there's one that's on.
And was that number for six hours or eight hours? I mean, it was for six?
It was $300,000 per hour theoretically, but I think it had some issues. Yes, ma'am?
The only thing I wanted to add, and I believe Mr. Simpson touched on this, it's our understanding that counsel's looking at some other possible changes to Chapter 15, 15 related to, for example, parking of boats on residential streets. So, if we are going to be making any change to Chapter 15 to extend the hours for the handicap parking, we'd like to lump them all together. I'm not sure exactly what timeframe would be needed, but I would just ask you to keep that in mind.
And I'm fine with that. He didn't give an indication of timing himself, I don't think. But, you know, let's say, again, let's say January, give everybody plenty of time to digest it, and maybe we can work on the financial part of it between now and then as well.
Councilman Carlson.
Not to get in a long, not to get in a long conversation, but another parking piece that I've been talking to the chief of staff about is, you know, the residents in, in lots of parts of the city, but in particular around the DeKalb area are worried about parking and, and also the response to parking violations right now, that outside of Ebor and downtown, the police have to respond, and it's, it's obviously not and shouldn't be a priority for police to, to come ticket cars when they have other more important things to do. So, I'm talking to the chief of staff about maybe expanding parking enforcement to other area and make it, other areas and making it self-funding. But anyway, there's, there's some other parking bases that may, may be able to come to a more holistic approach to, but by January, hopefully, we'll have the answers.
My motion would be January 23rd that legal would come back with that draft ordinance, and obviously we can tweak it, approve it, or kill it at that time.
And Councilwoman Miranda, you?
Thank you. I appreciate the kindness of the remarks of the, of Mr. Dingfelder bringing it up, but I really don't know. I'm not prepared to vote on something that I don't know how many handicap persons we have working in downtown. I don't know how many handicap persons we have working that are part-time and full-time. I don't know how many violators there are that are getting the permit. You walk into a doctor's office and you have two toes, and most of them need it, don't get me wrong, but I know a lot of people that I see walking on the street, they're going to outrun me. And they're just as healthy as anybody can be, and they got a handicap sticker. They're going to use somebody else's card, they use, it's, and I'm not saying it's rapid, but I'm saying I got to know all the facts before I go after a department, not going after it, before I take money away from the department, the loss of main parking garage of money, that lost all the money south of, I think, south of, I mean, Kennedy Boulevard at a certain date for so many days a week. How much more is this department going to take unless we change the rules?
Councilman Dingfelder.
Ms. Miranda, I totally respect your comments. The only thing I would ask is between now and January, perhaps a lot of those facts and issues can be fleshed out, and there's plenty of opportunity to vote against the draft ordinance in January when it comes back.
Well, before I have a draft ordinance, I want to know what the facts are. I'm not going to write an order if it's one guy, one individual, yes. If it's 10, maybe, yes, but if it's 500, I'm going to say.
The mayor's, the mayor's committee recommends.
Well, that's fine. Let them bring it. Get, John, I want to pass something that I got facts on. I don't have any facts here other than what they told me. Whether it's factual or not, I don't even know that. So, that's where I'm at. So, I want to vote no, and I don't mind being alone.
And I'll say for myself, I'll vote yes for the sentiments, but, you know, for, for the outline of what's there, and then I'll wait to see what's in there in terms of my final decision. But the sentiments, obviously, I think are, we all agree, I think all, six of us here are, are good, but there is a lot to be filled in, but I'll, I'll vote for, for the sentiments.
Well, you know what? Let's buy a little more time then, and I'll, my motion will be for February 20th, and perhaps if we can get, between then, maybe the committee, the mayor's committee can come up with some more information for it.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilwoman Scalko.
Does that include the franking that the?
Not at this time, but, but everybody's able to explore their own, those issues on the record.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to vote no, only because I don't have no facts on it.
No facts.
Going no with the franking here?
Correct.
Thank you. Anything else, sir?
In regard to the, the underground, undergrounding ordinance, the resiliency issue, and the county has a very viable ordinance, it's, again, as I spoke to earlier, I think it's self-determination. If, if a neighborhood wants to get involved in that process, it's a very lengthy and expensive process, but certain neighborhoods might feel very strongly about undergrounding. And I think that it's, it's up to the city to work with TICO and that, those neighborhoods to accommodate their concerns about overhead power lines versus undergrounding. So, there's no, like I said, to pass the ordinance doesn't cost anything, and if we have the ordinance on the books, then down the road, you know, we can address the expense, those potential expenses down the road. So, with that said, I would make a motion to direct legal staff to, to a great extent mimic the county's ordinance. Doesn't have to be exact, and we can tweak it up in regard to the possibility of neighborhoods undergrounding their power, overhead power lines. And that would be, again, I'll give them a little bit of time till February 20th. I'll make that the sixth.
And Councilman Miranda, sir?
I'm going to support it based on the facts. I want to render the county ordinance, you have to have, I believe, something like 57% of the vote, yes, the first time, then it goes up the latter to 70-some percent, and then even at the end, you got another vote going, if I recall the ordinance, and it's about $673 a household a year, and this was Dana Shore, the only one that's got it in the county, if I recall reading it, and that's going to cost 20 years about $12,500 per house. So, that's what they want to do, they can do it, as long as I don't pay for it.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder and a second by, was it, Councilwoman Scalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the last one without, I hope, hopefully without controversy is James Hammond was an amazing activist and individual in the African-American community. I'm going to request that the administration explore an appropriate naming of a, of a facility and/or a street and ask for a recommendation to come back from the city administration to, to properly honor Mr. Hammond, who passed away, I think, within the last year or two.
We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilwoman Scalko. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And if staff has any questions, I've got contact information for Ms. Odom, who was here.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Scalko.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Citro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just briefly, I want to thank the Montreal, I want to congratulate the Montreal Rays for winning their game last night, excuse me, Tampa Bay Rays, for winning their game last night and advancing in the, further in the playoffs. I also want to publicly thank Sonia, Councilman Goode's aide, for these lovely pink ribbons, and I, I hope I can speak for the council that we stand in solidarity with all the people that have suffered with breast cancer, the survivors, and also we stand in support of October being Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Councilwoman Miranda.
None this week, sir. Be prepared for next time.
Councilman Carlson.
I have two forms out from, from the statement last week.
Chairman Vera?
Thank you. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you so much for that. Where, where is that? I have so many. Thank you. Okay. An email, may have a motion for the item and addendum. It's an email from Jeffrey Shannon, Petition Representative, requesting the review hearing scheduled on October 17th on the petition be rescheduled. We have a motion by Councilwoman Miranda, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And that was to December 18th.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
10:30, 10:30 a.m.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay. And I, just briefly, motion for commendation for Safe and Sound Hillsborough to be presented before council at November 7th, City Council, for their efforts to reduce violence in our community.
We have a motion from Chairman Vera.
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
And I motion to move that the presentation by University Area CDC be moved from October 17th to November 21st, as that day we're having Tampa Innovation and Mark Sharp's group, and that's redundant, given the nature.
Second.
Motion from Chairman Vera with a second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
I, I motion that this Sunday, I'm going to be going to, I think it is, Viva Tampa Bay Festival, that we give them a city council commendation if they so want it.
We have a motion from Chairman Vera, a second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
And, and if we do that, which I believe we do, obviously, everybody is, is welcome for that. And then last, but certainly not least, I would motion for the, the resolution supporting federal legislation banning the use of assault weapons and high-capacity magazines as detailed as to be detailed in the resolution.
We have a motion from Councilman Vera with a question from Councilman Shel, from Mr. Shel.
And you're setting that, you're asking council to bring back the, you're asking that.
Two weeks.
In two weeks.
Because next we have CRA.
October 17th.
Yep. So, again, I'm motioning for that, the, the resolution will be here for my colleagues' inspection and review.
All right. We have a motion from Chairman Vera with a second from Councilman Citro.
Oh, and, and I apologize, with the addendum, the amendment that Ms. Grimes suggested on the, on the issue of preemptions.
It would be an additional whereas clause, I would suspect.
Yes, and that'll be part of it.
Yes.
And I still second.
We have a motion from Chairman Vera with a second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Mr. Chairman, I believe Ms. Coyle had a request for a particular date for the workshop on the next cycle.
Yes. Good afternoon. Catherine Coyle again. I sent in a memo request, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, and I haven't seen it placed on the action agenda or on the calendar yet, the July cycle code amendments. The last workshop available is October 24th. There's only one privately initiated amendment and just a very short list of some cleanup items, mostly cleanup items that are public amendments, and I don't want to miss that date and have to push it all the way to January if we could add that.
So, you anticipate this will take?
I don't anticipate it taking very long.
I would think not, but just for the record. Okay. May we have a motion to that?
October 24th.
Yes, sir.
October 24th?
Yes.
There was an item that, I can't remember where, how the timing works out, had to do with the downtown code. Are you familiar with the one I'm talking about?
It is not on October 24th.
Did it make the July cycle?
Oh, oh, that motion? No, that would be on the January cycle.
Okay. So, the, which goes, which would move for?
When we say January and July, it's based on the deadline, which is July 15th was the deadline for the July cycle, and we process. So, we come, we work them through, have them, everything reviewed internally, come to city council, you transmit to the planning commission, and then it comes back, usually by the end of the year for each cycle or the mid-year for the January cycle.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Scalko, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we add that to the 9:00 a.m. list? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And my last, and if I may, my last resolution was noted to have passed, correct?
Yes.
Just making sure. Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chair, I got a note, I don't know if this is from the clerk's office or not, Mr. Miranda, but, so, this relates to Mr. Miranda and this idea about streets closing for more than 90 days, and that's really, apparently that issue is just kind of floating out there, and we need to tie it up, but I'll do it next meeting.
Thank you, sir. And, and yes, sir. Oh, yes, if I can, counsel, please be reminded that next week after the CRA will be the two-hour workshop on the Code of Ethics for Public Officials. For those of you who are attorneys, the Florida Bar has approved two hours of CLE, two hours of ethics, and I believe the city attorney's office has been apprised of that, if there are any attorneys who need additional continuing legal education.
Do we have to refer to you as professor?
No. No, but you just, but I'd prefer, I'd prefer if everybody just was here, that would be nice. But that being said, that being said, counsel, a couple of things. Number one is this is for the benefit of city council. This is set as a workshop, but it is really not a workshop. In other words, there will be no opportunity for public comment, and there will be no opportunity for new business, and frankly, because there is no official business set, I'm recommending that this not be televised. It'll be recorded and available, but it will not be broadcast and as part of the, the cycle of replays. So, why is that? For several reasons. And first of all, it doesn't relate specifically to city business. Secondly, I'm not aware of any other jurisdiction that when they do this, they do notice it, but they don't televise it and broadcast. It is really specifically for the benefit of city council to comply with Florida law, and it would also affect the replay of, of other matters. You also have the CRA. It's an additional workshop that's been set. Normally, it could be had set, it could have been set as a special discussion meeting and not done in this room, frankly, but because of the fact that we could take the opportunity to apply CLE credit for the legal department and to have the, the audiovisual, frankly, this is the only space in this city that could accommodate that. So, it would be my recommendation that it not be televised, and frankly, I would ask counsel, in order to allow all of these things happen, specific to the agenda, we could do one of two things. We can either set it as a special discussion meeting, ask for a motion to that, or just a motion to waive the workshop rules to allow it to go forward the way it is. Yes, sir.
In regard to public involvement and public questions and that sort of thing?
Yes.
I agree with you. I mean, it's, it's a training session for us. It's an informative session for us, but at the same time, I would think the community, to the extent anybody watches, should be very interested in what, in what our ethical, what the state ethical rules are, what the, you know, what the rules are that control us, public records, sunshine, you know, why we can't talk to them about zoning issues when we meet with them, you know, when we run into them at Publix or something like that. You know, all those types of things, I think, are important for the public to learn because that way they can better understand our job and our role in this system.
Yes, but it's really not an overview that's created for the benefit of the public. We get down into the minutia of what you need to know.
But they can change the channel. But they can change the channel. I don't know, I just, it feels like we're hiding something, that's all.
Oh, well, well...
I mean, why should we?
Isn't it going to be recorded?
It is going to be recorded.
I mean, I'm fine either way, I mean, I'm not a proponent either way, I'm...
It's going to be recorded, so we're making a special effort not to televise, that just seems wrong.
No, 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 it's not a special effort, not, actually, it's not a special effort to not televise it, frankly, it's a special, it's an eventual thing, twofold, number one, if council wants to do this, that's fine, but what I'm saying is, are you creating an expectation on Publix's part that annually you will televise all of these things in the future? That's just a concern, that you're setting a precedent in regard, no other jurisdiction to my knowledge, and I've done several of these, and I could do research, I don't know with absolute certainty, but what they do is they just post it, they have a conference room, and they do it for the council members, and sometimes when it's of the League of Cities, for instance, I'm doing one in November in Orlando for the Florida League of Cities, people attend that, but there is no public participation, the public, it's open to the public, they're able to attend if they wish, but if council wishes to have it televised, it would be my recommendation that there is no need to do it, but if council wants to, for the sake of informing the public as to the arcane rules of...
If there's no motion, will it be televised?
If there is no motion, normally, normally it would be, unless, I think the best practice, the chair can make that decision, I've been informed, but I think the best practice is leave it to council.
I'll tell you, on my end, I, whether it's televised or recorded, I have no strong position either way, to be quite frank, I don't think the public will be tuning in on this one, but if Councilman Dingfelter has arguments to the contrary that could persuade us, you know...
And the other thing, just for me, just logistically, I have to be prepared if it's going to be televised, and I'd have to work with the cable department to be able to know exactly what's going to be broadcast to the public, whether the audiovisual can work from here, do I stay?
Can it be recorded and televised at a later time so that we can avoid that?
I don't know, I don't know, I haven't worked it out with, I haven't, frankly, I spoke with Mr. D. in the cable department and just informed him that there may be a possibility, it wouldn't be televised with that being an issue, and he said he would be able to comply. I don't want to make this a long issue about it, if council wants it televised, that's fine, if council feels it's, there's certainly nothing to hide.
I'll tell you, I think it's our, and we never should use the word internal, but it's our own educational process that we're doing, it's not a public hearing in the traditional sense, I think to televise it, I just don't see the need, again, I could, I don't feel strongly about it, it's not like I'm banging my fist, you know, saying so, I just don't frankly see the need to do it, you know, that's just my opinion, it's being recorded, you know, anybody who wishes to see it may do so, they can get it here, rent it a Blockbuster, whatever they want, but, you know, otherwise, I just...
What year are you in?
But I, I don't feel strongly about it, but again, if other council members wish to try to, you know, convince, that's, that's fine, you know.
Are we part of Netflix now, you think?
Uh, maybe, maybe, who knows?
Streaming live? I don't know, I mean, we're down to four members, so we're going to deadlock on some critical vote here.
You can't, I don't think you can waive your rules with less than five, Frank.
Well, there we go.
You know, it's so funny, we, we don't, the thing that concerns me is, we don't, except for that unusual water tour, okay, in our, in our five or six months back here now, we don't meet and discuss or do anything that's not right here and right up there, and that's a part that concerns me.
And that was not televised either.
I know, I'm saying, except for that water tour, which frankly had severe logistical issues.
Yes.
Okay, in terms of being televised and everything else, because of loud motors and lots of distances and everything else, except for that, we don't, so I don't know why, I don't know what the, what the need is, and I, you know, and I hear you're saying that there's not precedent around the state and yada, 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 but the city, I think the city residents expect that if we're going to meet and chat about things, that it's televised.
You're not going to chat about things?
What do you mean, we're not going to chat about things? Oh, we don't get to ask you questions when...
Ah, that's different, asking the question?
Yes, so we ask you questions about the ethics rules or the sunshine rules, why shouldn't that be televised? I don't know.
I didn't even think, I mean, if we, so you're saying we need to have five members to even vote on this?
Well, here's what your rule states, it says, "Any of the foregoing rules may be temporarily suspended for the meeting then in session," okay, that takes a five, that takes a majority vote, so I misread it, so if you want to do it as, but you still don't have a vote, if it's, if you don't have a voter for it, it won't pass. That's, here's, here's my issue, and I'm going to be very blunt about this, for as long as I've been City Council Attorney, this law has been effective since, I believe, 2013, if I, or 2015, I believe it's 2015, City Council, each individual City Council member has a legal obligation under Florida law to be able to complete annually, on a calendar year, four hours of training, two hours of the Code of Ethics, one hour of public meetings, one hour of public records, that's each of your individual responsibilities. The following July, you are required to attest to the fact that you did that the previous calendar year. In the years that I've been sitting here since that law has passed, it has been very difficult for City Council to agree to sit for four hours over any given time to be able to do that. This year, we're coming up in October, and there are, I believe, perhaps some City Council members who have yet to do it, I wanted to do it as the best possible way to do it in the way that I have done it repeatedly for other jurisdictions, and that is with a notice public meeting, perhaps even off-site, not in chambers, not televised, in a way that it's just doing, it's City Council's legal obligation, not for the benefit or need of the public, they're welcome to attend, it's an open meeting and it's noticed, but the logistics of this city, and all the other cities that I've been to, there have been alternative locations where such a meeting can take place.
And that's fine, I think this is much ado about nothing, I mean, this, let me hear, Councilman Meniscoco, Councilman Citro, how do you all feel about this? I'm not...
Meniscoco, you want to go first?
I'm agnostic.
I'm fine the way it's, I don't mind, I don't mind sitting for four hours, you know?
No, but I mean, on it being televised.
But televised or not, if it's being recorded and anybody can request a copy of that recording, there's nothing hidden, there's no anything, it's there, it's documented and it's, you know, transcribed with closed captioning and everything, so...
Councilman Citro.
My only thought is, is we have a meeting for CRA, we don't know how long that's going to last.
That's true.
We don't know if we're going to take a lunch break, so my point is the logistics of it, when do we tell the people to tune in, excuse me, when do we tell the citizens to tune in, how do we know what time it is, how do we know time, how long it's going to last? My opinion is, let's record it, then go ahead and put it on on CT TV and let the people watch it then. I'm sure we're going to ask questions that are going to be the frequently asked questions by the citizens.
Well, there it is, we don't have a vote, so there you go, so I think that, you know, this positive issue kind of takes it down. Anything further on this point? No. We have a motion by Councilman Meniscoco, a second by Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counsel is adjourned, thank you, gentlemen and ladies.